Today is Tuesday, July the 11th, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. In our agenda this evening, we do have some ratifications for full-time police officer, also for the appointment of a clockwinder. Those will occur after our communications from other boards and before our 7:15 appointment. With that, do we have any public comments this evening from the board? Seeing none, do we have any public comments this evening from the public? Selectwoman, selectman Luck.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the board.
Good evening.
Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. Many residents were taken aback by the town manager's actions at the June 29th Board of Assessors meeting. Her recommendation to appoint Rena Suesi to interim principal assessor after Ms. Suesi's unwavering support and participation in the recent tax assessment debacle that has cost the town over $1.3 million was outrageous. Then, the town manager doubled down on her recommendation after hearing strong, valid opposition from residents and the Board of Assessors' reasonable request for additional time to consider options. She then continued to request ratification of this appointment even after being threatened by Ms. Suesi that she and another town employee would quit if the applicant were not appointed that night. Is this how competent managers operate? We think not. For us, this further confirms that there's a major problem at the highest levels of Lunenburg's town government. It was clear from the town manager's comments and actions that she is the one who has control over the assessor's office, effectively hiring people and entering into third-party contracts without prior input from or review by the Board of Assessors. To take these actions before the 2023 tax investigation has been completed and recommendations implemented is completely reckless. Rather than restoring residents' trust, these actions are further eroding public confidence in town leadership. The town manager reports to the Select Board. The Select Board needs to look closely at these actions of the town manager and ask themselves, why are residents they have pledged to support so upset? What can be done to rectify the situation? The time for sitting idly by is behind you all. For the sake of the town we love, do something now. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Luck. Do we have any other public comments from the public this evening? Mr. Luck?
Carl Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. Almost forgot. First, I'd like to thank two new members for stepping up to the challenge of joining the Select Board. It's not easy. It won't always be easy for you, but believe me, you can make a difference. Tonight, I'm delighted to be here to give credit where credit is due. As such, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of the investigation team, namely the Chairman, Michael Ray Jeffries. His efforts to find, hire, and most importantly, manage the assessment firm of MFS were key in getting through the tax abatement process. Thank you. While there is a lot of work to do, thank you for making this happen. As a result, we have solved the near-term financial issues for many residents, but the work has just begun. As a result of being out of the loop for over a month, I may have missed something important. At least, I hope so. As far as I know, the investigation effort is still ongoing, or at least, much more is expected from the residents, by the residents. At the beginning of this process, a commitment was made by this team that updates would be provided to the public every two weeks. As of today, there are still only three status reports on the town website, with the last one being in February. One more verbal update has been given since by the Select Board, along with a commitment to put that comment on the website the next day. This has yet to happen. This commitment was to post the list of questions which was directing the investigation's effort, as well as the list of residents' questions that was committed to be answered by the investigation team. Why is this fundamental information being withheld from the residents? After watching the BOA meeting on the 29th, my concern that this investigation is dragging on too long have been heightened. Our town manager is pushing forward for hiring people and contractors for the assessor's office with little to no input from the BOA. Without the investigation team's findings, identification of root causes, and recommendations to correct the situation, how can it make sense to push ahead with the same organizational model before sharing the results with the public and allowing them to provide input? I have not seen this subject on the Select Board's agenda for some time, and respectfully request that the Chairman inform the community of the status of the investigation and when at least a preliminary report of findings can be provided to us. I'm sure there are many opportunities to learn from this experience and improve, particularly in the area of organization, roles and responsibilities, and these may well require changes to the charter. Thank you for your attention, and please move this investigation along and/or put on hold personnel replacements or additions until there is a comprehensive plan in place for the assessor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luck. Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public?
Would I be able to respond to something?
It's not advisable to respond, but you certainly can.
All right. I just want to say, this may look a little bit different from the outside than from the inside. I'm speaking most particularly about the...I was unable to attend that Board of Assessors meeting, but I did watch it the following day. And I just want to sort of counterbalance the points that were made, which were, you know, many of which are valid. I understand the concern, but somebody needs to be driving the bus down there at the assessor's office until a permanent assessor is found. Now, finding a permanent assessor is, and I just want to emphasize this for the public, I'm sure you probably appreciate this, but finding a permanent assessor, this is not going to be an easy thing necessarily. I mean, these are, these people that are skilled are very few and far between. There's a dearth of people going into the field. I just want to say, I mean, while the way some of that meeting went, and most notably, I would say, the ultimatum, that if a decision wasn't made right then and there, there was going to be nobody. That was not, that was not an easy dilemma to be facing at that very moment, and the alternative was to have nobody for who knows how long. And the wheels have to keep turning, even if it's with somebody that the public isn't necessarily behind or appreciates at the moment, but things must still get processed and go on. So, yeah, I mean, I understand the concerns, but I think it may have been reckless not to do the appointment at that particular juncture. That's all. But I think the points raised are fair enough.
All right. Do we have any other public comments from the public? Any announcements this evening?
No.
All right. Communications from other boards? I'm not tracking anything. Are you?
No.
All right. So, we're going to start this evening with a ratification of the town manager's appointment of the full-time police officer, Michael McCormick. You have a great name, Michael. I just want to say that. Lieutenant Thibodeau.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeffrey Thibodeau, Lieutenant here in Lunenburg. This is Michael McCormick. I have a letter here from Chief Gamble. As you are aware, the department has immediate opening due to an officer accepting a position with the Massachusetts State Police. We posted the position, interviewed six potential candidates for the position. Upon completion of the interviews, we were able to identify a candidate that would be an excellent fit for our department and community. I am pleased to recommend Michael McCormick for the full-time police officer position. Michael comes to us by way of Essex, Vermont, where he is currently a sergeant with the Wusnicki Police Department in Wusnicki, Vermont. Wunuski. I knew that one would get me. Michael and his wife have decided to relocate to Townsend, where his wife's family is from. He is a graduate of Essex High School and holds an associate's degree in criminal justice, graduating in 2013 from the Community College of Vermont. He graduated the Vermont Police Academy in 2017, as well as the Vermont Part-Time Academy in 2016. Michael completed the Drug Enforcement Administration DEA Task Force Training in 2021, which led him to be assigned to a drug task force in South Burlington, Vermont. During Michael's background investigation, it was found that he was an outstanding person as well as an excellent employee. Comments were made such as a wonderful person, you can't find anyone better. Michael is a hard worker that never complained, and he has a good ability to be coached, to list a few. Previous employers described Michael as a great asset to their department, hardworking, who has volunteered for numerous community events. All the, one of, actually, I shouldn't skip over this. One of the events that Michael is passionate about is the Special Olympics, which he volunteers his time each year. All the qualities that were described in his background investigation were also observed during the interview process. Michael brings a wealth of knowledge and experience, and all of which we believe would be a tremendous asset to the department and the community alike. Michael meets all the requirements for post-C and is being presented to the Massachusetts Municipal Police Training Committee on July 19th, 2023, for a permanent exemption from the requirements of attending a basic recruit officer course training. I respectfully request that Michael McCormick be appointed to the position of full-time police officer to be effective July 20th, 2023. Thank you for your consideration and my request. Sincerely, Chief Thomas Gamble.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant Thibodeau. Do we have any additional comments from the town manager?
Just that I had the opportunity to meet with Michael. I was very impressed by his qualifications, personality. I think he's going to be a great fit for the department, and he'll be an asset to the town. We're glad that he's coming back to the, or his, your wife's family lives in this area, so it's a benefit to this region that you're relocating here.
All right. And with that, do we have any comments or questions from the board?
I just have one basic question, just because I don't know. Is starting on the job contingent in any way on that exemption from the training that's decided July 19th?
Yes, it would be, because then you would meet the requirements of the Massachusetts State Police Training.
Is that why the July 20th start date, you're assuming that he'll get that exemption?
That's why we have the July 20th start date, correct.
Okay.
I'll just comment that from the letter, Mr. McCormick and I spoke a little bit earlier because I had a prior meeting, and he was early, which is always good. But from the recommendations of the letter, it sounds like he's got great experience and a great qualification list, which is excellent, and escaping Vermont just in time after the flood. So, there you go. Appreciate you. I think you'd be a real asset to the town.
I don't have any questions. Sounds like you'd be a good addition to the department, so thank you for your interest in the town.
I'll just echo what my colleague said. Thank you.
I usually ask questions, but I don't have any tonight. So, you know, it's always good to hear about, you know, I think what makes an officer successful is not just technical knowledge of the job, but also being well-rounded, knowing how to work with the team. It's very important, I think, that within the department right now, we have a really good leadership team with Thibodeau, with Maury Alley, with Tossie. So, you have some really good, I know I'm not naming everyone, but you have some really good leadership. And I would encourage that, you know, once you have this appointment, to lean into that. You have a lot of good experience here. We do value those officers who are born and raised in Lunenburg and/or who live in or around Lunenburg. So, it's really good to hear that your family or your wife's family is rooted nearby. I think that gives you a lot of insight into the unique culture in this part of Massachusetts, and I have no doubt that you will be very successful in this role. And with that, I move to ratify your appointment as a full-time police officer.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All right. If all, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So, congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Right. Always an important day in the life of an officer to get appointed, so congratulations again. All right. And as the room clears, we're going to move to the ratification of the town manager's appointment of the town clockwinder, George Martin. And do I see George with us tonight? I do not. All right. So, to the town manager to present this request.
So, this is one of the annual appointments that was missed on that list of clockwinders. So, this is, George verified that he was interested in continuing in this role.
All right. And I know two of our members have served with him. Any questions, comments? If not, is there a motion?
I would just like to, you know, this should be no problem to approve in absentia. I mean, he's done this before. He's been good at it. He's got good technical knowledge. He's timely. And so, it'd be an honor to have him back. So, that's just further support for his, this ratification.
And his investigation into him, we had reports like he winds a clock like nobody's business. That's what I heard.
Extensive background. So, I would be, I will make the motion. I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of George Martin to the position of town clockwinder for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All right. If many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right. The motion passes unanimously. If we can just make sure that Mr. Martin gets sworn in and gets a copy of our policies, that'd be great. I know that they don't really meet, though, so it makes it kind of simple.
It's been a while.
Okay. We are past our appointment time, so we'll get going with that. So, tonight, we have an update from our DPW Director, who's going to come forward to discuss the Flat Hill Road Culvert project and also the drainage update. Following Mr. Bernard's update, I will open to the public for any questions from the public related to this update, and then also, there will be some board discussion. Good to see you, Mr. Bernard.
Glad to be here, Mr. Chairman. Again, Bill Bernard, DPW Director. I'll start with the Flat Hill Bridge project.
All right.
So, just a little history. The town's been wanting to have that bridge replaced for at least three years. We have secured money for it from a grant from MastDOT, the Small Bridge Program. We also have capital funds to pay for it. We have a consultant who's designed the new bridge and put the contract specifications together. So, we're at the point now, we're trying to get easements, some temporary easements. We have to move the utility poles over. The line goes right over the bridge. So, for ease of construction, we have to move the poles out. It's about 15 feet or so. That way, they can get a crane in to lift out the existing bridge, put in the new bridge. So, the easements, there's four properties, one in each corner, have been working with the residents. So, two of the residents have signed easement paperwork. They were willing to donate the land. One of the residents is, he's willing to sign, but he wants to be paid for the easement. And the fourth, it's been a struggle. She doesn't want to sign without her lawyer looking into it, but I don't know that she has a lawyer. So, that's held up the project. So, I reached out to our town council, Adam Costa, and he recommends starting eminent domain takings. We can, it could be all four properties. It's probably easier at this point to do all four properties that way. But that's going to be a process. He said it's a three-to-four month process to get that done. So, the construction won't happen this year. Construction should happen in October, when the water level in Lake Shirley is lowered. That way, there is less damming and pumping they have to do. That would be the ideal time to do the work. So, at this point, you know, the clock's going to run out on us on that. So, going forward, we'll get the easements, and then we'll advertise the contract over the winter, and we'll be ready to go in the spring. There is some lead time on the, it's a precast box culvert. There's, I'm not sure what the lead time is on that, but the earlier we get in the queue for that, the better. So, it'd be good if we get the contract out over the winter, get it awarded, so the contractor can get that into the queue. So, we'll be ready to go next fall to do the work.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to open to the board for some questions on this one, but can you talk to me a little bit more about when the conversations with residents about the easement started, as far as rough date on this one? And then, it sounds like you have two residents that are willing to sign it, so if we can just focus on the two that are not, specifically the objections for the resident who's not interested in signing an easement or that's waiting for her lawyer to look it over. So, what has this, again, the timeline been?
So, timeline, kind of looking back at records and emails, the previous DPW Director started the conversations with the residents, so that was 15, 18 months ago. The formal paperwork that I received, we mailed it to the abutters in February of '23. We also had a meeting set up with the abutters. Let me see what the date of that was. Well, we had the, the meeting was in December of '22. Two of the abutters showed up. Both of the ones that showed up are the ones that were willing to sign, although one was the one that wants money. But at that time, he was willing to sign for nothing. Yeah, we sent them the contract, the easement language, in February. Yeah, I chased them for a little bit. In April, I had the two come in here, and we had it signed. They had to be notarized, so I got that done. So, the other two, so, one of them, after his taxes were increased, he wanted to get paid for the easement. He is willing to sign. We just have to find a way. And the other one, I think she's just confused. She doesn't quite understand what the easement is, and she thinks it's going to negatively affect her property in some way. But I think she's just confused. I tried to explain it to her, and we sat right here for a couple hours, and it's just, I don't think she got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm just going to open to the board for any questions related to this portion of Mr. Bernard's presentation this evening.
You said temporary easement?
Yes. So, temporary easement would be to move the utility poles over, just for the duration of the construction, then move them back afterwards, and then the temporary easement goes away. There's also small permanent easements, just so we can, you know, physically walk around the bridge to do maintenance and inspections.
Okay. So, how big are we talking?
Very small.
Yeah, that would be my guess.
Yeah, the, they're all, I forget the numbers, but under like 1,000 square feet. Small areas.
Total area, under 1,000 or?
Well, it depends on the property. Some of them are a little bigger. I don't have the numbers with me tonight.
Okay.
And they, all four properties have both temporary and permanent easement?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
So, does, at the end of your introduction to this, this evening, you said that when you went back to town council about the eminent domain, you made some comment, or maybe I heard wrong, that he thought it would be good that we did eminent domain on all of them?
Yes.
Instead of the ones we've already have signed?
The reason for that is, if there's any liens on the properties, that would be the way we would have to go. So, we don't know for certain. Two of the homeowners that signed said they don't have liens of any kind, but maybe they do. So, we have to go through that process to check that. So, if he's going to go through that process, we might as well go all the way with the eminent domain. And it could be $0, or we could have to pay them. It depends on the homeowner.
Well, if you're taking somebody's land, I'm guessing it's not $0. But does the person who's holding out, have they been approached, being indicated that we have this option, and so, it's not like we're not going to be able to do the project? Has that been made clear?
Probably not 100% clear to her, no.
Okay. I just want to do whatever is quickest. I mean, if we're willing to look at the liens of the people who are agreeing, then, I mean, I find it, why would we want to go back and do the eminent domain for all of them? But then, if we're going to do that, why wouldn't we just done eminent domain from the beginning? That would have been a whole lot clearer. So, I guess I'm not understanding where we are. We have one holdout. Why don't we work on the person who's holding out and, you know, but whatever gets it done quicker, because, again, I don't want any of these fundings to run out because we couldn't get people to sign on something of replacing a bridge that is failing.
Agreed, yeah. So, the MassDOD grant, the completion day for that is December 31st, 2024.
So, tick-tock, tick-tock.
Exactly.
It has to be done, the job has to be done by December 24 or started by?
Of next year.
I know, but.
Yep.
Completed.
Not just initiated, but actually completed.
Correct.
We don't know the lead time on the culvert.
Well, I would, yeah, okay. Whatever is the fastest way would be the, and the surest way.
I agree. I'll work with Attorney Costa on that.
Have you, to the town, through you, Mr. Chair, to the town manager, has, I mean, is there any indication that this will go easily, just easier, just going through eminent domain?
I think what Bill referred to as far as with the liens, that piece is definitely critical in knowing if eminent domain is needed for all four properties. And so, we will continue to work with Attorney Costa on that piece. If we only need, say, two eminent domain takings and appraisals for those, then that's the way we'll proceed.
Just to clarify on Mr. Alonso's question to you, the presence of the liens is relevant because it has to do with someone else's interest in the property.
Right, correct.
And so, it's about signing away someone else's interest.
Correct.
That they may not have the ability to do that, and that for us to ask a bank to do that, or a lien holder to do that, is unlikely. And so, the most effective route forward is eminent domain. That way, there's no question that the interest, you know, that we're notifying the people who have the that the interest, you know, that we're notifying the people who have the interest and that it doesn't put someone in a sticky situation of having to waive someone else's interest.
Correct. And just because we haven't found anything on the registry with a mortgage lien holder for that property, doesn't mean one doesn't exist. So we'll continue to work that, that issue, but you're correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So I have one final question and I guess that's again to you, Mr. Bernard, or to the town manager. Is like, if this was the cleanest way to do it, why, why didn't we do this from the beginning? Why did we get into conversations with owners about, you know, cajoling them or convincing them that it's in their best interest instead of just doing this?
I can answer that from when Bill was not the DBW director. Those conversations, like Bill said, started a year and a half ago. And at all indications at that point, there were no objections to, it was all verbal conversations. There was no dissent of that. They wouldn't be amenable to giving permanent and temporary easements for the property. So it got to a point though where we were ready. The, the bid specifications were not done. We weren't ready for that project to go out to bid anyways at that point. The bid specifications were done much later in the year. And when we were at the point where we're ready to do, process the easements is when one party in particular, who I believe was also difficult to contact and locate, that's the party that is the primary dissenter to signing these.
All right, any other questions from the board?
All of mine have been answered. I really just wanted to get the deadline because I saw it referenced in the documents, but the date wasn't provided, so thank you.
Not a question, just, just my, my initial instinct was precisely the same as Mr. Alonso's. You know, why, why, but you've, anyway, I, you know, I know, let's all understand, you can't totally speak for and represent town council. But I don't think anybody, you know, any of us should be contradicting that at the advice of town council in this regard. Clearly has the knowledge on this, but, you know, I guess maybe just a little more fact finding is probably worthwhile to see if there are liens and you say you are going to be doing that and all. Because I mean, to the extent you could just have them sign and not, it sounds like it's, could be a little more resistance and a little more, you know, a little more friction going through the eminent domain process for all four. Maybe not, but, you know, and it could also, I don't know to what extent, I mean, I certainly know, I'm familiar with eminent domain, but I don't know to what extent somebody can actually put up a stink about it and to potentially have it viewed as a hostile act. You know, you have two cooperative people already. They perceive it as a hostile act. Now they want to put up resistance. It may just be creating more resistance than you need to. I guess all these factors and all the facts as usual need to be put on the table before, before action, so.
I think it was wise to approach the residents and see if you can come to common ground. I think that a conversation should be had as soon as practicable. That eminent domain is on the table. I think that, I'm not hearing any resistance from this board to going that route. And you may want to have a conversation with the resident to advise them that we certainly would like for this to be resolved as soon as possible. But that, you know, with all deliberate haste and if eminent domain is the way to get there, I don't, I don't see this board being resistant to that based on the comments I just heard.
Mr. Chair, may I ask something additional? How long will the title check, the check of the title for any liens take? Do we know how long that usually takes?
Talk to attorney Costa on that.
Okay. Because again, you know, this, the difference between people signing over permanent easements for no cost or whatever somebody's costing me, the one who's doing a cost to give an easement matters, matters what it is. I guess I don't know what the numeric value, the dollar amount is. But eminent domain means they don't own the property anymore. So you, you don't get eminent domain for an easement. You take the land and then it's out of the town's land. So, you know, somebody has to be put in there, you know, we're not interested. If it's, whatever's faster again is what I'm interested in. And if somebody says, listen, you can either give us the easement, which we're going to walk over to look at and inspect the bridge every once in a while, or we're going to take the land, you know. I don't want it to be a hostile thing and I don't want it to be viewed as that. But, you know, we have safety issues and there are road issues that have to be addressed. And the town's not going to stop because somebody doesn't want to give some parcel of the land so we can do an inspection. I think somebody should explain that to all the, well, two at least of the owners.
Yes.
I would just add, just to, as far as the comments about deadline and the timeframe, schedule and Bill, you jump in with your experience and your discussions with our consultant VHB. But this is, we're in a much different environment than we were when we looked at this project a few years ago before we got the small grant bridge money for this project to supplement it. Costs have decreased overall. The supply, although the supply chain is still an issue, is not such an issue as it was when, at that point in time. And our consultant has given us updated estimate costs as far as I'm sure lead times on similar projects as this. So we would take all those in consideration of when we put up to bid and timing in the project. And in your experience, Bill, as far as starting in a September timeframe, sufficient time to be done by December?
Yes, it's, it's a fairly easy bridge to put together, yes.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Just, I have no experience with temporary easements. But eminent domain applies for them as well. They're still temporary or?
No, eminent domain is you own the land.
So I assume that, that easement, the temporary easement is larger than the, the, the size you need just to inspect the bridge, walk around?
Correct.
And the location of that pole that's being moved, is that on one of the properties that person has agreed?
Yeah, one has agreed and one has not.
So it's two poles, two poles, oh, just two poles?
So only two temporary easements?
Four.
Four per, four temporary?
Four temporary, one in each corner.
Cause they'll be equipped and everything.
Yeah.
Cause I think that if, especially if I was one of the two who already said okay, I would not want to go down the eminent domain route.
Right, I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree. Two residents have already signed easements. It meets our needs. I think that satisfies what we need. We're only talking about two other residents.
Yeah.
In my opinion. I would not, yeah. I understand what you're saying with the lien holders, but I think we already have what we need from two of the properties, right?
We do, yes.
So we're only, from my perspective, we're only talking about two properties at this point. Is that fair? All right.
So one more thing to, just to add about the bridge is it is in tough shape and MastDOT inspects it every three months. I look back at the inspection reports for the past three years. It hasn't really changed and I don't see it changing. The area of the bridge that is in really bad shape is blocked off by the Jersey barriers, so nobody's over there. So I know some people call and they're afraid of the bridge. It's, in my opinion, it's not going to fall down. MastDOT, it does inspect it every three months. They're very conservative on situations like this. If it does get worse, they will tell us to shut it down. Or if I see something, I'll shut it down. So I don't want the residents to fear the, the bridge.
All right. Okay. And now I think you're going to talk to us about some groundwater or Anna Culver.
Yes. Mr. Marchetti come in, he did come in. We should invite him up also?
Please. You have the floor, Mr. Bernard.
I have the floor, okay. Okay, so since the last time Mr. Marchetti was here, which was April, he's reached out to the homeowners across the street from where the issue is, the Allison's, to talk to them about potentially using some of their land as, to put it, pipes through their land to pipe the water out of there. They were kind of against it at this point. They would prefer to see maintenance performed on the detention basins and the other structures on Cortland Circle. If that maintenance is done and that doesn't alleviate the water issues, then the Allison's would be in, okay with us taking easements to go through their land.
Would you, would you mind, I'm going to call up Adam Burning here in a second, would you mind giving us, just for our newest members, just a brief overview of how, how we've arrived at this current moment? If you wouldn't mind just giving us that summary of how we've arrived at this moment as you give your presentation on kind of what your proposing comes next? I don't know if you want to give it, if you, if you want to give it, if Mr. Burning wants to give it.
Start in nineteen ninety-one and just ease it right forward.
Yeah, my name is Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering. I'm a civil engineer and this is probably over a year ago, I was asked to look at the Village of Flat Hill condo association, so the subdivision that was built twenty years ago to review the, the plans that were proposed. I believe the first, the first round of the design was submitted in the mid-nineties. And it took about ten years before the final subdivision plan was approved, which includes the whole condo association you see today. Shortly thereafter, it was constructed and, and we, we've seen evidence of even before it was constructed, there was some drainage issues or excess stormwater runoff flows that originated at the top of Flat Hill. After construction, the drainage situation or the flooding condition was exacerbated. There was a lot more stormwater runoff discharged from the subdivision detention basins toward the right of way. The stormwater flowed along the edges of the roadway. There were times in the, you know, basically at that time and years later, the water crossed over Flat Hill. At some point, Public Works put a culvert across the roadway to try to get rid of some of the water, which conveyed it to the Allison Farm side of the road. The Allison Farm subsequently had flooding through the fields that used to behave and portions of the fields now are too wet to behave. And the condition has only worsened over time. I believe additional culverts have been installed in the same vicinity of Flat Hill to cross the roadway, which helped convey stormwater runoff from the west side of the road where the subdivision is over across the street. And in recent years, we're seeing, or since I started looking at it a year or so ago, there are other locations where water is coming out of that side of the roadway from people's backyards flowing onto the roadway. So it seems to be likely to me that, you know, twenty-something years ago, the groundwater conditions were one thing. And since then, conditions have changed. Groundwater is higher, which impacts the existing drainage system that's out there. So initially, a year or so ago, in meeting with Matt Allison, we discussed a few different ways to try to help alleviate the flooding that's occurring right there at the subdivision roadway. We looked at putting in swales along both sides of Flat Hill, all the way down to Page Street. We went out and did test pits on both sides of the roadway and determined groundwater is really high. So adding swales or some sort of infiltration, best management practice along the shoulders of the road, really wasn't that practical because groundwater was so high. The water would get there, but it really wouldn't go anywhere. And it would end up flowing all the way down to Page Street as it does today. So we looked at alternative methods of getting rid of the stormwater runoff. And particularly one that seems like the most attractive method is to catch it in catch basins and pipe it away. But the issue with that is you have to pipe it somewhere. There's no town-owned infrastructure along the right of way on Flat Hill. But the town does own a sizable piece of property to the rear of Matt Allison's farm, down closer toward the Shirley property, the Shirley Town Line, which is kind of uphill of Beaverbrook. And the, the large well in that receiving body where that stormwater runoff eventually gets to anyway. But the problem with that is you got to get there. And in order to get there, we'd have to cross either Allison's property or the Whalen property. There's really no other way to get there. So a year or so ago, we discussed this. You know, conceptually, Matt was open to hearing about it. And over the past several months, after meeting with the town, discussing the issues and kind of the right approach to try to start mitigating this flow somehow, it, it really seems reasonable that, and more practical, that first, before we go through the cost of, of design and construction and similar that you're just talking about, possibly easements and things like that to get there, is to try to treat the stormwater runoff at the source. So we know it's, the majority of it's coming from the Village of Flat Hill. The Village of Flat Hill has a stormwater system that's been installed since day one. There are several detention basins, there are two detention basins right along the frontage of Flat Hill that, in my opinion, at least, you know, last, last fall and stuff, we were inspecting it, they didn't appear to have been maintained. The vegetation, the cattails, the fragments were filling the basin, so all that vegetation takes away some of the volume. It appears that the southernmost basin, the inlet coming into the pond, the inlet was half choked with debris. So sediment has filled the pond, so the basin volume's been consumed by, you know, vegetation. So sediment, salt stands from the roadway. So over time, that's the whole point of these detention basins. They collect the sediment, they treat it so it doesn't go flow downstream. But it appeared to me that the, the volume of these basins appears to be taking up quite a bit of it. So the way it was probably designed and built twenty-something years ago, it probably has a fraction of that volume available now. Another thing that I observed at least was the outlet structures to both, they're corrugated metal pipes. They're vertical chimney type pipes with outlets. They're twenty-something years old. They've rusted. They're in, you know, disrepair. There's likely stormwater runoff getting out of these basins where, at lower elevations than it should. So more runoff's probably leaving the basins than it was originally designed and intended for. So it makes more sense to me, and I do agree with Matt Allison's train of thought, that, you know, if we can have these bases maintained, clean them out, grub them out, restore their volumes, fix the outlet structures, start at the source of where the water is likely coming from first before the town goes through the endeavor of the costs of design and construction to do something, you know, Plan B if Plan A doesn't work. Is it fail-safe? You know, it's, it's kind of hard to say it's gonna work for sure. But looking at the condition of the basins now versus the way it was designed, they clearly are, have diminished capacity. They don't have the volumes that they were designed for. You know, there is, it appears to be that there's some room to, to expand these basins a little bit. I know one of them was expanded early on in the construction process. But, you know, there, again, with, with a little more, you know, survey and due diligence now and as we'll plan now to see what they look like versus what they were during their construction would really tell us exactly what's happening there. So, you know, when, when, you know, when Bill introduced me and was saying that Matt Allison was against it now, but he could if this fails, you know, it's, it's a starting point. The maintenance of the basin makes the most sense to me. Fix what's there now. And then if it doesn't work, then we'll consider Plan B. You know, and, and that's when, again, we'd have to approach the Allison family and, and, you know, Susan Whalen about if, if Plan B really is the only solution is to have that basin down on the back property, which, which makes a lot of sense to me. Then figuring out how to get there is, is kind of where we go next.
Now, as just said, I'm gonna call Mr. Bernie here because I, I have a question for him about the approved site plan. But, you know, the select board did conduct a site visit to this location. What we identified, and I'll ask my colleagues to correct any misunderstanding that I have, but what we identified was a day that it wasn't raining. It hadn't just rained. But there was active water coming out of the ground. And numerous, it was kind of in the heart of the Village of Flat Hill, like in that wooded area around their primary road. And we saw this water go all the way almost to the, I, I think there was a resident that was along Flat Hill and her whole backyard area was fully saturated right below her septic tank area. We observed that basin. We saw that there was clear sediment that was clogging a big chunk of the drain. We saw the outflows that were there and, and observed the disrepair that they were in. So just to my colleagues, I just want to confirm that that characterization of our site visit is, is accurate? Okay.
I would say yes.
Yes.
All right.
And prior to the last meeting, which I believe was April, the condo association did provide us with a couple of records of maintenance. I don't know if it was all the records they had, but it was only a couple of them over the last several years, so. And, and it really So, and, and it really consisted of just mowing the basins. So it wasn't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a substantial maintenance where they were grubbing the basins back out and restoring their volumes and fixing outlet structures. It was really just, appeared to be just a mowing. So, you know, so maintenance has been done, but I, I just don't think the maintenance, enough maintenance has been done to restore it back to the condition that it should be in.
And just for clarity, the maintenance you're speaking to is, is coming in there basically and taking out that sediment?
Yes.
Uh, to deepen the basin and clear up all the inlets and outlets?
Yes. And I want to add a clarifying statement here that the state stormwater regulations, they're very detailed and they require all of that maintenance now. But at the time this was approved, I didn't find an operation and maintenance plan that required all this. So I feel like we're at a, we're at a timetable here of when it was approved versus now, where right now it absolutely 100% be required. It's a legal document that most towns have recorded with their approvals, where that wasn't the case when this was approved. So the mechanism now to get this clean and maintained is the difficulty here of how exactly can the town and the condo association, you know, engage each other to get this done?
Yeah, and what, based on your experience, and I'm calling you up, Mr. Burney, but based on your experience and the square footage of that basin, what kind of cost would, would you expect the owners of the association to have to pay to do that?
Uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's probably a contractor with an excavator and a truck for, you know, a couple of days to do it right. So, you know, and we're not talking about 500 bucks or a thousand bucks. It's probably closer to like a $10,000 item.
Okay. Luckily you have people who specialize in that in town.
There are, yes.
Mr. Bernie, if I can call you up, and my question for you is again, we're still trying to get background, although I know that we also got kind of the path ahead there. My question for you is, as we look at the approval for the Village of Flat Hill and we look at the creation of the stormwater detention basin, what requirements, what tools do the town currently have in its disposal to expect or require the condo association that's there to perform this, the type of maintenance that's being recommended?
So, excuse me, the, the approval does say it should be maintained as constructed. But how and what that means isn't clearly defined. So, you know, without the operation and maintenance plan, it's hard for a layperson to say this is what I would need to do. The mowing and removal of vegetation would generally be one, what, what one would look at. So without consistently surveying and identifying what the base elevation is, the association and their contractor would probably naturally assume that by maintaining the vegetation and keeping the pond clear and accepting water, that that would be normal maintenance. The outlet structure, again, until you have an engineer look at it, it most likely appears to be functioning correctly because the water goes into it and comes out of it. You know, for whatever reason, in the 90s and the turn of the century, corrugated metal was everybody's favorite thing to use, probably because it's easy to work with. But it really just, metal and water don't really mix. And I'm still not clear to me why that was the, the industry standard at the time. So the town can go and say, you need to fix this, you should fix it. And they can say, well, we've done this maintenance. There's a, a, a condition in the conservation order of conditions that says the town can take an easement to perform maintenance if it wasn't performed. I've, I've sent town council a question about what exactly that would look like. Generally, an easement is a permanent, we've talked about easements tonight. So you're all aware of what they are. They're, they're a permanent access right over, over a piece of property. This is private property, it's a private drainage system. If the town expends their funds on that, one would expect the town would look to recoup them. What the mechanism to do that is, is outside of my scope of practice. I would, I would lean to town council on how one would do that. Generally, it's going to be some sort of lien or demand or otherwise, but I don't know what obligation someone would have to, to return that and how we, we would force someone to do that. And whether or not this, this board would have the appetite to authorize the expenditure of that funds and create that, again, legal headache to, to go after afterwards. So, you know, there, it, it all comes down to what amount of money the town wants to spend on correcting the issue and, and how we go about recouping those funds if the work is done on private property. So are there legal mechanisms potentially? Again, I, I'm gonna have to talk further with town council about exactly what that looks like. You know, we've been at this for probably two years at this point. And, and at the beginning, it was fairly cooperative. And the, the trustees at the village came to the table, they met with us. It seemed like everybody was looking for a cooperative solution. It seems that this has all started to, and I don't want to say it's uncooperative now. It seemed to take, be taking a lot longer than it, it looked to take at the beginning. And I understand that when you get a, a series of private property owners and the, the number starts having more and more zeros after it, that gets challenging because people then have to pay for that. I think also town staff has recognized that the town expending those funds is also a challenging proposal. Because while this affects taxpayers and, and they shouldn't be subject to it, you know, it's, it's a very small to a percentage of a percentage of the town. And there's a lot of competing priorities for funding.
All right, do we have any questions from the board at this point in time or comments?
I do want one recollection because you talked about the site visit that we went on. And to the best of my knowledge during that site visit where we did see water flowing out, out of the, the drain pipe, the, the retention basin was largely unfilled at all. And it was damp or had some puddles, but was not really filled.
Correct.
So it wasn't like anything was going into there. What was going out onto the street and running down was coming from not the retention basin for the most part. It is, that's my recollection, is that correct?
My, what I, what I recall was that the basin was largely non-functional and that water was kind of just passing through it. That it was, it was sitting there, there was a standing water sitting in there, but any new water was automatically coming back out. And I thought it was just based on the flow we saw coming in and the flow we saw coming out, it looked pretty equal. So it looked like it had, it was, it couldn't hold any more water than what was already there.
Yeah, there, there was water getting underneath the structure through the sides of the pipe. So a lot, like you said, it was coming in the basin, but it was going right out. So I think the outlet structure is not functioning.
Right.
Okay. Yes, so the water wasn't being retained.
So that was what I recall.
Right.
Yeah. Because one of the thing, one of the things I thought about, and this is just potential, as we're talking about running things up, I mean, if that retention basin, which is fairly sizable, if it was cleaned out and dug out to what it was and we fixed the pipe and we, even if it, something, whatever, whatever we got as a, coming out on the road, if we pumped it into, caught it before the outflow, so it didn't run straight downhill, which is, looked like it was doing. Because it looked like it was, the water was coming into the roadway before the outflow of even the drain, the, the retention basin.
Yeah.
If we got, if we captured that somehow and pumped it into the retention basin, you could make the retention basin use what it was supposed to be used for.
Yeah, that, that, so you're speaking of the, the water that was coming out from around the septic system in the middle lot? So I went back and looked at the hydrology map and the existing additions plan. There's a large wetland, it was a big flat surface wetland in the back there that encompassed that whole area. So it already was a large wetland. So it was a receiving body of water. It received runoff from around, you know, the whole property. It wasn't taking water from the street, just surface runoff. You know, so it's, it's kind of hard to tell why it was flowing out there. You know, over time, same type of thing with who knows what, you know, vegetation leaves, everything falling. It takes up that volume and if the water has nowhere to go, it finds its least path of resistance. So, you know, it's kind of the only thing I could see. It's, it's that and groundwater table. If the groundwater table is that much higher, the water has nowhere to go and it runs off instead of infiltrating into the ground, it runs off instead of going down. So, you know, it's, it's a factor of, you know, it, it only happens at the wettest time of year. It's not a year-round thing. And we've been seeing everywhere, just across the board, the groundwater tables have risen significantly in the last several years.
Okay.
And this whole area, we're talking about Flat Hill, it's, it's a glacial till, so it's a, it's a bad soil anyway. So we're kind of fighting the, fighting the geology.
Are there any?
Yeah, I have a question. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the area yet, but, so I'm hearing on one hand, the basin just isn't functioning as it was when it was first built because it hasn't been maintained properly. But then I'm also hearing that maybe if you were to design something today to address drainage, would you, would it be that catch basin?
It would.
You mentioned corrugated, you know, metal.
It would still be a detention basin, so it would be a basin like it is now.
Yeah.
You know, based on the groundwater conditions of today, you know, we'd have to do some digging just to see where the groundwater elevations are. If, if groundwater is that much higher, you know, then in order to get the volume you need, the basin's just gotta get bigger footprint, you know. So again, without a real survey to, we, we had the right of way surveyed, so, but we didn't have all the private property surveyed. So where the actual detention basin is, I don't know how much it could be expanded. You know, we know it's surrounded by wetlands to the west. But it appears that there's enough area to do something there to expand the footprint of the basin if we had to.
So it's, you don't think it's just a matter of cleaning it out?
That's, that's what we're hoping, yes, because most of the time.
Think it is?
Most of the, well, it, it's cleaning it out and I certainly would recommend replacing the outlet structure. Because we know water that comes right in and goes right out, so it's not functioning the way it's supposed to. And, and right now, it's completely choked with, with wetland vegetation. So you really can't see what's on the bottom of the basin. The basin was supposed to have under drains and things underneath it to help infiltration happen and stuff, but you can't see any of that now, it's all choked with vegetation.
And has there been any damage to the road from all the runoff, excess water that's?
I, I believe over the years, and you may be able to speak to it better, the edges of the roadway have been, have been rolling. There's been some cracking.
Yeah, that's what I would.
It's, yeah, it's.
Yeah, okay. I'm just worried that.
And, and in the winter with runoff from the snow, then it gets ice.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, that's a, um, I'm just worried that cleaning out what's there isn't sufficient. That it's, it's not, like, if you were to start today and put something in, it would be different than what's there.
No.
No?
No. I would, the first thing I would do is clean the basins up.
Maybe enlarging it.
Is restore those basins the way they're supposed to be, the way they were designed. Would, would be absolutely my first step. It will improve the situation. It may not fix the drainage issues that are happening downstream, but it will certainly make it better.
Mr. Franco?
Yeah, I mean, based on everything I've heard, you say, but you, you, I know, no, these numbers are not binding in any way, shape or form, but you're saying around 10K to clean out that.
That's my, yeah, best guess.
That basin, I mean, it sounds to me like, you know, that's Plan A. Plan B is, you know, all this other complicated, very expensive stuff, it sounds like.
Yeah. Plan B would be several hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Several hundred.
It seems very clear to me that Plan A ought to be tried. And, you know, I just, I guess it's a question of what are the steps to do that? But I mean, it seems very clear that, that's, we can, you know, it sounds like it has potential.
Yeah, and this, and this is, like you said, step one. It's, it's things that today would be required no matter what, no matter what development you do. Maintaining your drainage system, cleaning the pipes, cleaning the catch basins. We've been there in dry conditions where it's, there's base flow coming out of the pipe. So the pipes could be, could be broken underground, you know. Videoing, video inspecting the pipe system is typically what, you know, we do in a case like this. But again, it's, it's, it's a private development. So, you know, trying to impose all these things that I, I'd put an O and M plan together for the whole drainage system, but, you know, that $10,000 number would, would go up pretty quick.
But you said clean it out and replace the pipes, right?
Clean it up, the outlet structure.
Yeah.
So just the outlet structure that's in the basin.
And replace something, you said some, replace something else.
The outlet structure. So cleaning out the basins, restoring the volume. And then depending on the outlet structure, and these are just, you know, they're corrugated, basically pipes sticking up out of the ground with holes in them. If you replace them with concrete structures, it's, they're probably a couple thousand bucks apiece. So you might add a thousand bucks or two to that 10K number.
So it's a little complicated because, you know, what happens on the front end of these, and I think Mr. Burney's gonna appreciate me saying this from our time together on the planning board, but what happens on the front end of these is that a developer comes in and wants to make some money. And, and what I notice is that they try to export as much cost as they can to every other taxpayer. And so they build these things and then all the neighbors around, as has happened here, say, whoa, 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 this is affecting my water, this is affecting my water. And it's like, oh, the calculations were all within the requirements. And so the neighbors start getting upset and then as we saw the development going in next door, we saw even more water coming into the roadway, which clearly is going to be an even bigger issue. And so what you have then after these things get developed and the developer makes all their cash and they put in their catch basin and they walk away, and then all these unsuspecting homeowners who don't fully comprehend what a condo association is a lot of the time, buy a beautiful home in Lunenburg and love living in there and then get hit with these exorbitant costs. Because, you know, what you have in a condo association here, the Village of Flat Hill, you have private roads, which means they have to maintain and pave those roads. Those roads cost a lot of money. And then this becomes one more thing for them to then maintain. So of course you have the interest of the association that's like, whoa, 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 we're taxpayers. What about us? What kind of services does the town get to provide? And so these kind of conversations that we are having here are very important. Because I think that from my perspective, it's private property. And so while I can understand the natural position that I would imagine most people from the association to be in, which is why should we have to pay for this? The reality is, well, that was a condition of your house getting built in the first place, was, was that this detention basin has to be there. But naturally, what I expect is for residents to have some interest in how the town can assist with these costs. Because as taxpayers, regardless of whether it's private property, what they're gonna point out to is how many residents are being served by it. The detention basin isn't affecting their quality of life, it's affecting everyone who lives around them for the most part. So what's the motive, what's the incentive for the association to actually do anything? If we don't then try to work with them on this or then come with a very heavy carrot or very heavy stick, so to speak. So what's the carrot? There's really no carrot here. There's, I mean, there's no carrot. This, this to me seems all stick. So I want to, if we can pause for a moment and I want to ask, I have to imagine that the members of the condo association have talked about this to some length. And is there a board chair or representative that is with us this evening from the Village of Flat Hill that can come forward just to speak to what you've heard thus far and what your openness is or isn't to conducting some work to clean out that basin? Good to see you. I know you recently moved from Mass Ave, long-term resident to the village.
Ned Pratt, Ten Alder Way, thank you for the invite. I'm somewhat dismayed that we're sitting, standing here tonight without really substantive prior knowledge of the tact that was going to be taken tonight with the reports from Mr. Marchetti and Mr. Burney. The only communication we received from town manager was at 4:43 this afternoon, asking us the status of the detention basin, correct?
And your invitation to the meeting tonight?
Nothing special, nothing specific in that invitation, is that correct?
And there was no discussion prior to share with you for tonight's meeting?
So my question to you this evening is.
Excuse me.
No, 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 no.
Excuse me.
My question to you this evening.
Excuse me.
This is, this is a select board meeting and I.
You just called me up.
We did.
So excuse me for a moment.
No, the question to you this evening is, is there an objection from the, from the condo association board or a willingness from the board to clean out the basin?
You're gonna let me address the board or not?
That, that's, that's what we called you up to answer.
Well, then I'm trying to, but you're not letting me to.
Well, let's.
You interrupted me three times.
I, I certainly did and I want to be respectful to you, but I also want to make sure that we're staying on topic.
Let me make my statement, please, again, thank you, as you afforded everybody else. So first of all, I do want to go back and remind the select board that the meeting that you had at the Village of Flat Hill was not an officially sanctioned through the trustees meeting. And I'd like you to acknowledge that.
And I.
It was not officially sanctioned, there was no trustees there, the trustees were not invited and you held a meeting on private property. Yes or no?
Yes or no?
I think that at this point in this conversation, I, I don't know if you're going to be helpful to what we've called.
Oh, I'm going to be very helpful when I get to my point, but I'm asking a very specific question, because you mentioned it just a second ago in this presentation, that you all gathered other people that were on the board, gathered there.
My understanding, to answer your question, my, my understanding.
Yes.
Is that when, when certain things receive special permits, right, through the town, that you allow the town to perform some forms of inspection?
I've been asking you a specific question as part of my presentation. Did you invite the board of trustees to that meeting? Yes or no?
I don't recall.
Okay, you did not. So, we're going to go from there, and now we're going to talk about our involvement with water. First of all, um, although appreciating the opinions of Mr. Marchetti and Mr. Bernie and their opinions, there is no substantive evidence that the Village of Flat Hill development has caused the water problem. It was just acknowledged during the first part of the presentation tonight that the water problem existed prior to the development of the Village of Flat Hill. So, I'm going to say to the select board, as I did last meeting, that this problem that we have here, and it is a town problem, because back in 2007, the planning board signed off on the development. It didn't sign off saying we should bring our detention basins back to where it is, as the, I'm hearing opinions to be done. What it was, was a sign-off saying that this is a functioning unit and we can move forward. That is where we're at today. The last meeting, I heard a selectman say, it's the town's problem, we really need to address it. And I, I honestly don't remember which selectman said that, so I do apologize, but it was stated at your last meeting. And it is a town problem now, okay? To have people come up in a public forum and say, well, the detention basins aren't up to snuff, that's not a factual statement, that's an opinion, okay? So, we have a, a very, very large disagreement with the town and the representative of the towns right now. If we were to have.
So, I, I want to reroute us, because I just want to, you know, this isn't a public comment.
Trying to talk.
No, no, I hear you.
You invited me up, I'm representing the trustees, I'm trying to get to my point, and you keep interrupting me.
Uh, this is not a public comment.
It isn't, you invited me up here.
What I invited you up for was to get an understanding if there is any interest on the part of this.
Trying to get there.
It's a very simple, straightforward thing. So, the, the question was that there's any interest on the part of the condo association.
It's not a simple, it's not a simple answer.
Thank you, thank you for your time this evening.
You're dismissing me now?
I am. Thank you for your time this evening. If I can call back up the DPW director. Mr. Bernie.
This is, this is democracy in action. I'm representing the board, and you're dismissing me.
Uh, what I, we ca, I called you up for a question, sir.
And, and I'm trying to answer it.
The, the answer seems pretty straightforward at this point, so I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your time this evening. And if we can call back up the DPW director.
Very good.
If, if you wouldn't mind, if you, we will, I will certainly give other members the opportunity to speak this evening on this issue. Bill, I think it's pretty clear, um, that there's some challenges here in, in working with the association. So, where are we at with what, what's being suggested to go forward? If, if we don't have an association that's willing to clean out the basin as per the terms of their agreement, then what are you proposing for solutions this evening?
Well, that's going to be tough. Um, the best solution, probably the least costly, is to catch the water before it hits Flat Hill Road, or as it hits Flat Hill Road, and then pipe it to the town's property, which is behind the Allison's property. So, we've got to go through the Allison's property. Um, they don't seem to be willing to allow easements if there's no maintenance done at the Village of Flat Hill. So, it's kind of an impasse. I suppose there's other solutions, pipe it further, it's just, it's going to cost a lot more.
When, when was this catch basin built? I missed that.
When the.
With, when the development doesn't predate the development? So, as part of the construction of the development?
Yes. We'll, we'll call you up, Mr. Whalen, Ms. Whalen.
May I give the, the two new members the time I've had on?
You may.
Oh, thanks.
Ms. Whalen previously provided this, she's one of the neighbors who's impacted by this. And Ms. Whalen, I'm going to call you up after we finish talking with Mr. Bernard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it sounds pretty clear that the recommendation coming from the engineer is that the first step in this process should be to clean out the basin.
Correct.
Seems pretty clear that the condo association's resistant to what's being recommended regarding that. Is, is that my understanding here tonight consistent with your understanding prior to tonight?
That's what I witnessed, yes.
Okay. So, what's the path ahead? Is this the impasse that we need to solve here of how do we move forward when the recommendation is for an association to clean out its basin, and the association doesn't seem to have much interest in the professional advice willingness in that, in that regard? Is that clear? Is that, is that what you're looking for us to make a decision related to?
That is correct, yes.
All right. I'll open to the board for any discussions on this topic.
So, uh, to what Mr. Bernie said, it sounds like we don't have anything in the development that is necessarily concrete, but it's not devoid of any comment. So, it's a matter of, like everything in the world, it's a matter of what we can legally define as being enforceable or not. And if it's not willingly, then of course, it's something adversarial, which is unfortunate. Um, so, I, I would have personally liked to have heard what, especially since they were invited up to speak, I would have liked to have heard what they did before they left, you know, before they were asked to leave the podium. But now I don't get the opportunity to that. Now it is completely adversarial, certainly from their side, which is, again, unfortunate. I was the one who, I'm certainly one of the people who said it was a town problem, because it's flooding a town road. It's flooding town residents from ways, it's deteriorating the road, creates a driving hazard with ice. And so, yes, of course, it's a town problem, but it's not necessarily solely a town problem, and it probably needs cooperation from all different places to make this better. So, um, you know, I know that it's not going to go away, and I know that I'm not interested in pushing it down the road like it has been for like at least 15 years, and I've said that to the residents, I think we have to come up with a solution for it. But I think a lot of the simple things that were discussed today need to be worked out with the association, that is, there's a shared cost or something that gets us at least back to where the detention basin is functioning to begin with. And we have to work those details out. I'd rather not work them out in, outside of the town, I'd like to keep it inside the town and come to an agreement as best we can, because it's going to be less expensive for everybody involved. But eventually, we have to come up with a solution.
Mr. Franco?
Um, a couple of things. Yes, I sent, I agree with the Mr. Alonso's comments regarding the, yeah, I mean, we have to find a solution. And I think we would have benefited probably from hearing him. I know he was dragging it out and not necessarily getting to the point, I understand that, but now we're missing that information, what he would have said. But, but that doesn't mean we won't get another opportunity. But, uh, while the point he was making, he said that problem pre-existed the development. Did we not, in, in some prior discussion, tell me if I'm wrong, that, yes, maybe to some extent, the problem pre-existed the development, but did not the development exacerbate the situation?
It did, yes.
Oh, okay. So, all right, yeah, so it's not as though nothing changed once the development was put in. I mean, yeah, I mean, just, just sort of on the, um, for all the points Mr. Alonso said, stated, for all the reasons, I, it, it's, I mean, I see this as some sort of joint cooperative approach to the solution. It, it, it is a town problem from the perspective is that it is going and affecting town residents. To some extent, the problem pre-existed the development, but not entirely. And so for, therefore, the development is clearly contributing to the problem. And, uh, even though legally, there was no requirement at the time that that basin was created, certainly it comports with current standards that if that basin were made today, that it would be their responsibility to maintain it. So, I, I just, I hope, and I think the way to approach this sensibly is to not make it an adversarial thing and to get their cooperation somehow and work it together.
Yeah, I, I concur fully. I think that, you know, coming in tonight, just, just to clarify, we did not extend an invitation to the condo association to present any information to us tonight or to speak tonight. Um, you know, understanding that the members were here, I wanted, I wanted to hear tonight kind of what their plans were based on the information that we had provided. Uh, it was clear that the tone of that conversation was not going to be appropriate this evening. And so, you know, I trust fully, I mean, the resident that was with us this evening is a long-term resident of Lunenburg, who clearly tonight had a lot of passions. I have full confidence that we will be able to, um, meet again and have a conversation about what an appropriate path forward is, perhaps when cooler heads prevail a bit here. So, in your, in your conversations thus far, I mean, I know that the process here is always graduated. It's to start with the least costly and go to the most costly. And so the least costly option would be for the condo association to clean out that basin. Understanding that the only way they're going to be able to do that is with money, which is taxing their residents, that, you know, the request is going to be on this board to look for, you know, what available funds do we have that can assist? You know, stormwater is one of the things that's covered by ARPA. Um, I think that if we, if we would have had a cooler conversation, we would have been able to get to the point of, of me expressing that, you know, I think the board could be helpful in this regard. But as you go back and, and speak with, um, you know, I think for next steps here, we need to speak with the members of the condo board, you know, know who they are and coordinate a meeting with them, and see if we can come to an agreement here for them to take some efforts to better understand what their financial needs are and what their request is from the town. Are you aware of them retaining any kind of engineering services themselves to look into this issue?
I haven't seen anything formal, I've kind of heard informally they have retained an engineer, but I, I don't know who it is, so.
All right. Because it would seem that if, if they're not considering what the engineer we've hired has to say, that they may have a professional opinion that's different. And so it would be helpful to kind of hear what that is and see what the path is ahead, because this is not just affecting some residents, it's affecting a lot of residents. But when we start talking about money and people's pockets, you know, people get, it becomes a different conversation, right? So, up to this point, you, you, the conversation with the condo association has been, where, where did you guys leave off with?
But pretty much where we're at tonight, it's, we asked them to, you know, perform some maintenance, and we're waiting to hear back from them on that.
Okay. And, okay. All right. Well, do, was there anything else regarding the presentation from you that you wanted to provide to us this evening? Any other information? I think you've given us a pretty clear picture.
Uh, nothing further, no.
All right. Is there any other questions for Mr. Bernard this evening?
No, thank you.
None. I, I would want to make one comment for the record, that when it was, when, when the representative from the Village of Flat Hill was up here saying that the lack of ability or capability of the detention pond and the drainage was an opinion, I want for the record to be shown, it is an opinion from a trained and certified engineer in this field. It is not somebody that we found on the street corner who gave us, you know, a finger-in-the-wind opinion. So, I think it was unfair, I wanted to get to that point with, with that, with that representative, but I want for the record of this recording to say that we have an engineer in this field who came to that determination.
I thought that exactly when it was said, and I forgot about it, but yes.
All right. So, we'll work on our side in reaching out to the board to see if we can come to, um, a meeting set aside with them for the purpose of furthering this conversation. I think tonight was not that intent, tonight was really to hear from you, Mr. Bernie, and from our engineer on this. Um, and I do want to pause, because I, we may have residents who are also impacted by this, Ms. Whalen being one of them. So, before you step away, Mr. Bernie, you're going to make a statement, but I also want to call on any other residents who are impacted by this to come and speak, so that way, and this will now be a public comment-type session, to offer any additional comments that you got that would be helpful to us in this process. Mr. Bernie?
Sort of to put on the record, similar to what Mr. Alonso was saying, the planning board did sign off on the construction of the detention basin throughout the process. So, this was approved as a subdivision and a special permit for a planned residential area. When one develops a subdivision, there is a method of surety required from the approval to the final construction. And what that method of surety is for is to be sure that the roadways, utility infrastructure, and drainage infrastructure is installed in significant compliance with the approved plans. Throughout the process, the planning board retains a peer-review engineer who does regular inspections of the construction and the plans to ensure that as they move through the process, it's done correctly. The surety is, is sometimes a covenant, which means they can't build houses until it's done. Often, it's some sort of cash or cat, or surety bond. And as construction happens, they release bits and pieces of that bond over time, with a final sign-off releasing all of those funds, saying that at that date and time, in that snapshot in history, it was constructed and is as it was intended to be built. That doesn't mean that forever in perpetuity, something will remain in that state. Roads, pipes, detention basins are all, all have a finite life, and they need maintenance and they need upkeep. So, to say that the planning board signing off in 2007 was a period, point-blank, it's done forever, I think is an inaccurate statement. And that doesn't mean that there aren't things that still are functioning, but I just want it to be clear that, yes, the planning board did sign off, but that's not a, a, a statement that goes on forever.
All right, any other members of the public?
Susan Whalen, 377 Flat Hill Road. Well, I was kind of disappointed that we didn't get more information from the trustees, um, because I actually had questions for them myself. I don't know if the, uh, catch basins have been cleaned, that I don't even know when the last time it was ever done. We don't know if there's foundation drains going in there. We don't know about the integrity of the drainage pipes. Are there, are there broken pipes? Are there leaks? Is there groundwater coming in? There's so much that we don't know that could, could be contributing to it besides even the detention basin. Just taking a step back, just especially for the new members, Matt Allison and I went through all of the Flat Hill, uh, Village of Flat Hill documents in the planning board, there were thousands and thousands of them. And I have a reference of 960 pages. And everything on that timeline is documented, um, by that little number in the brackets that corresponds to my master document, um, so that if anyone has any questions about anything on that timeline, I can, I can provide a packet of information that corresponds just to that. Um, I, I just want to address this issue of the drainage on Flat Hill prior to the development. In all the readings that I've done, I found one statement by one engineer saying that this was, that, that this had occurred prior, that there was a, a problem, a problem with drainage, which was kind of vague. That area has been wet, there's a lot of wetlands in there, the whole area is wet. But starting in 2002, after that road went in, that's when we started to notice the water coming down, Flat Hill. Something was disturbed, whether it, it was from the re-grading, putting in the utilities, putting in the road, putting in the houses, it changed the whole way of the water coming down. And, um, so, to say that it's not coming from the Village of Flat Hill, I think is kind of naive, I don't know. So, I get flooded out quite badly. Um, the road in front of my house gets iced in the winter, it's, it's quite severe. And, you know, the water just comes across Allison's field and floods my whole driveway out in the back land. just comes across Allison's field and floods my whole driveway out in the backland. I've been working on this for a long time and I would really like to see a solution before I pass this world. I've been working on it for about 20 years, so. I was so hopeful that getting everyone to talk about it was going to help to move this project forward. So, anything that can be done will be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whalen. And I will look to set up that meeting. It sounds like we're going to need some time, but I will look to set up that meeting with the board. Again, that was not tonight. You know, it just wasn't what we had put on our agenda. It was not the intent of our meeting this evening to really have a presentation from the board. But I think it would be helpful to get their perspective on what's going on and kind of work on a plan ahead. It would be great if that can be handled with staff, but if this board needs to be involved in that, then certainly we can be too.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Talk one question.
I just want, I just wanted to add about the issue of that easement that's written into the, both the order of conditions and the deed. I think Adam is exploring that to find out the exact meaning of it. There's something in there about it. The maintenance isn't done, so I don't know. I hope that a mutually agreeable solution could have been found or can be found.
Yep.
Okay.
While we have Mr. Marchetti here, I just have a question. In a system such as this, as you, I'll ask the question as you're walking up. In a system built such as this, what would be your anticipated maintenance over the course of the 20 years since it has been in existence? And how long would you expect the corrugated pipes to last?
I think, I think the corrugated life of the pipe is pretty much at its limit, like 20 years or so. Depending on the type of pipe, depending on if it was galvanized, depending on, you know, the type of pipe that was used at the time. The MAST EEP regs, for every stormwater best management practice, in the booklet, they give you a full maintenance schedule for timing and how often you need to maintain it. Catch basins, they say typically, they say twice a year. Detention basins, it says one to 10 years. So, it depends on how much sediment. So, in a situation like a subdivision that might not get sanded as heavily as a, you know, Walmart Plaza, Walmart may need to be every year, but a subdivision might be every five years or 10 years, you know. So, it really depends on the application where it's at. So.
I just wanted to let my fellow board members in the audience know. The reason I asked the question is it would be interesting to know from when we started a dialogue with the trustees of the village, what maintenance has been done from that point in its inception to now, to see how closely it matches that and to see what's, if what we're experiencing or what the system is experiencing is what would have been expected by anybody in the field at the time.
I believe they did say it has been maintained, but we were only given two copies of a report that showed it was maintained twice in the last, you know, five years or six years, 10 years.
Thank you.
All right. Any other guests? Mr. Luck?
Carl Luck, 50 cents that lane again. And not on this subject, but on the bridge, if that's possible, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to clarify some of the timing. I'm a little concerned if I understood the timing right. If I understood, the money has to be, the project has to be completed by December of next year of '24, I believe, correct? Completed. And I think I heard for good financial reason that the current plan gets us, that we're too late for this fall, the current plan in order to reduce, keep the cost down with the lake, that you'd use the lake drawdown to help save costs, which I'm all for. And doing that, the work would start next fall.
Correct.
Correct. I've lived on that lake for 60 years. No, more than that, but maybe we'll get into my age. And I can tell you that depending on the drawdown with such a small window, so you're looking at, to begin with, the lake won't drawdown for at least two weeks after October 15th. That's when they open the dam. It'll be November 1st before the lake is down a safe number of feet to get in there and start working. So, we're in November. I don't know what the projected time to do the bridge is. I think if you're all ready, you probably can do it in two months. However, more often than not, you know, that drawdown is controlled by two gates that are, I forget, 18 inches in diameter. They are not big enough to keep that lake down if you get a lot of rain in November, which quite often happens. Quite often, the lake will go down a few feet, maybe even four feet. Because of the watershed being 21 miles, square miles, an inch of rain is a foot of water in the lake. Those gates cannot keep up with the rain if you get a wet season. So, I think having a plan that's based on the lake being drawn down, starting work on November 1st, which you probably could, because it comes down pretty quick, because it's usually pretty dry right at the beginning of the drawdown, but then in November, it quite often pops back up. And if it pops back up during construction, I don't know what that means to you, but it won't take much delay to push you out of the December window. So, I strongly suggest that, check my numbers, we have a lot of data on the drawdown levels and over time, we've got lots of graphs, and you can take your own judgment on the risk associated with that plan. But I think that plan is at high risk based on history. Thank you.
Yes. So, whoever the contractor is that wins the award, they will have to provide us with a dam and pumping plan and a schedule. So, they may want to start much earlier. They may want to start in August. They might want to start in September. To do that, they would have to dam. So, there's ways to do that. They're environmentally friendly. They can, they call them super sacks. It's big, it's basically a big sandbag. And put a few of those out, block the water, pump the water around if it's rising. So, there are ways to do the work. We don't necessarily have to wait till the water's at the lowest level.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
You're welcome.
You got one too. All right.
Matt Wood, 64 Arbor Street. So, as far as the Flat Hill water situation, first off, anytime you have drained water going down to someone else's property, it always gets people, you know, that's not my water, that's not my water. Just my just suggestion to the board here is that we can investigate, you know, whose problem this is, but the real solution here is how to fix it. You know, I know that, working with Bill along, no town wants to go onto private property and fixes, et cetera, et cetera. I think Mr. Marchetti's plan on this is the best approach first, and if we could find some common ground to try to remediate and start there, I think is a great idea versus, you know, running it through Matt's property, which would be very costly. But this will go back and forth and people will get tensions, but I think the focus is to try to, how do we fix it first? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bill. All right. I expected that to take some time this evening, and it did. So, we're going to turn now to the town manager. I did not check to see if he put in a report. I'm guessing not.
I did. I want to also thank the DPW director and the land use director for coming tonight and Mr. Marchetti for your time as well.
Thank you, guys. We're going to try this again.
And the residents.
Thank you.
Do you want to skip that? I don't know if other people here are waiting on other agenda items. Okay, skip the town manager report for now.
All right. So, tonight, in our old business, we have discussion of ARPA funding request and evaluation criteria that votes may be taken. I'm going to pass down, and I got one for you too, I'm going to pass down what I've prepared for us, and it's not in the Google Drive. I worked on this earlier today. So, and I'll wait till everyone gets it and kind of walk through what we're looking at here. So, what I've taken on this form is ARPA commitments and requests. What we're looking at is the top portion of the form before that first thick black line are the requests that we received, you know, what we prioritize, and then ultimately what we've committed. There's two things I've noted here that are not filled in. I don't have those totals. It's funds were allocated for the Board of Health, COVID response hours, and then remote meeting costs. And those totals came to about 90-something thousand dollars. So, after those and all the commitments that we made, so again, when we're looking at my totals, I just don't have those full numbers available, but in the available funds, I am accounting for them. I'm accounting for them coming off. So, what we have remaining is $1,080,000. And then in the bottom portion of this, what we're looking at are the requests that we currently have and that we've prioritized. So, note, for example, PAC initially had a request of like 67,000. They modified that request. They decreased it. I'm noting that the library has decreased their request based on the conversations we had to exclude the $300 HVAC project. So, what we have remaining for ARPA is roughly $2 million and $2,027,390 in requests and $1,080,000 in available funds. So, what I provided for the board tonight is I looked at this and considered the things that may be static, the amounts that I would suspect the board is going to fully fund, and looked at kind of how we could potentially fund the other request as well. This is just a way for us to look at this. So, I presented in that bottom right box, option A, option B, option C. And what I've done here is I've kept a couple of requests static, assuming that the board will want to fund, fully fund those requests, and then see how we can meet the other request as well and stay below our total here. And so, I think for conversation tonight, what I'd like to kind of tease out from the board is, you know, are the assumptions that I've made based on previous conversations about what would be static correct? Is the board prepared or ready to make any commitments related to them? Or, and/or how does the board want to proceed with the criteria? We do have in our Google Drive, two different documents that we had drafted for how we would identify criteria to sort this through. And the, you know, we have not followed these criteria. We did not finalize them. I think there was a lot of difference with the board at the time on coming to these conclusions. So, I open to the board for discussion and conversation on how the board best recommends proceeding.
I have one quick question. The food pantry amount, I believe, came back last. It was 15,000 to 20,000. Isn't that what Corinne had said?
Yes.
Did their request decrease from 50?
At that meeting, I think they said 20.
She looked at equipment, right? Was it 15, I had, in my notes, 15 to 20K.
Okay.
Which one was that?
Kitchen equipment for the food pantry?
Okay. Okay.
All right. So, I'll make that note. So, that becomes 30,000 available.
And I think the library also changed. I don't know if that's...
They took off, they took the HVAC off, and that was 300,000, because their initial request came to 760. They took off the HVAC, and then they also, I think in conversation, it seemed as if the generator may have been a bit premature.
Oh, I didn't know the HVAC had come off. Was that the one I missed?
Yes. It was, well, after the meeting in conversation with the chair of the library trustees, he had noted that based on the feedback received at our last meeting related to going through Green Communities Task Committee, that they would want to pursue that option first.
Okay, okay.
So, I will just offer that I listened to the meeting. I missed end of June. And in that discussion and previous to that, prior to that, in all the other presentations, I have continually asked for a finalized spreadsheet of what we were finally looking at by department. I know things were added. It came in, it all dribs and drabs and different things and different formats. I'd love to see just a spreadsheet of what we're being asked for before I can determine. I didn't realize I had to make this on my own. I would have made it on my own, but this had been requested, so I didn't. But I'd like to know what these components are. So, every one of these, many of them are just one thing, like, you know, the pantry is one item and PAC is one request. But some of them are multiple requests, and I'd love to see them broken down so I can see them in their entirety by request number. And then, I certainly would love to revisit what, as a board, we're going to use as criteria. I think criteria are important. I'm not willing, and we've already done the top portion of this in kind of fits and starts, and I, you know, I wasn't really behind a lot of these, the way we were doing it, because again, didn't have any criteria. We just had a bunch of things and we would pick one out of the hat and say, okay, let's vote on this. And that's what we seem to be doing. And I, I mean, that may be a little more flippant than it actually happened, but it's in that same vein. So, before we commit the rest of this, or any portion of it, I'd love to know what the criteria are. And I'd also like to posit to the board, it's like, there's no reason why we have to get to the end of the money either. Like, we can leave things in reserve to see what happens if other things come up. So, those are the points I wanted to make, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
So, I have a question about the water district request here for the numbers, because if I remember correctly, the total for that request was 485. So, the pilot testing was 400,000. So, I noticed it's broken down to 300,000, 400,000, and 350,000. I'm just wondering why that is.
Yeah. So, what I tried to do tonight was if you look at the column that says request value, and I kept the totals here, what the requests currently are. So, this is, you know, it's, and I think to Mr. Alonso's point, the only area that we can provide additional real clarification is related to the sewer's new request, which came in the form of an email, and in the library, which was in the form of a presentation. But the rest of this was, is, I think, for most priority presented, what I did on the right side here, when I, as I'm proposing options A, B, and C, it was if, I don't disagree with Mr. Alonso's point, which is the way that we should be dispersing money is to have a criteria and then to evaluate things based on that criteria and to make dispersments accordingly. We have two different, again, criterias that we've come up with. The board has not been, majority has not agreed to either one of those approaches. And so, we have two different directions on how to proceed. I think, you know, the task at hand is, can we bridge the divide? You know, we do have two new members here this term, and so, you know, we can certainly revisit those criterias tonight to take a look to see if there's any way we can bridge the divide and then finalize it. But what I've proposed below was I made a couple of assumptions. I assumed that PAC would get their full request of 50,000. I assumed that we would commit the 101,000 for new sidewalks for the schools. I assumed that we would commit $50,000 to the regional BIF, and I assumed that we would commit 175,000 to the municipal building design committee. With those assumptions, those come, that comes to about 550 roughly thousand dollars. So, then there's about 600 roughly left. And so, looking at that 600 left, it's how do we divide that up between the different requests? The board previously, looking at the 500,000 dollar request that came from the sewer commissions, we previously prioritized it down to 200, that we were only looking at sewer manholes. The sewer commissioners in the last couple of weeks submitted a supplementary request for an additional 305,000. And so, what I've proposed here is how can we, you know, scenarios in which we meet some of those needs, in which sewer doesn't get everything that they ask for, in which the library doesn't get everything that they ask for, in which the water district doesn't get everything that they ask for, and Boys and Girls Club doesn't get everything that they ask for. And so, looking at it from that lens of if we commit to these certain projects, how can we be flexible in these other areas? So, in one option, as I presented tonight, it would provide, you know, 300,000 in option A to the water district, and 150,000 would go to the sewer. Another option would have 400,000 go to the water district and no money to the sewer. And in that option as well, that would be full support for the Boys and Girls Club's request. And then another option, it drops the Boys and Girls request, drops the sewer... And then another option, it drops the Boys and Girls request, drops the sewer request to a hundred, it drops the Water District's request. So I was really trying to demonstrate, and you weaken, these totals coming from the Water District, coming from the library, coming from the sewer at this point are all about the same. Sewer's asking for five hundred thousand, Water District's asking for four hundred and eighty-five thousand, schools, excuse me, the library's asking for four hundred and sixty thousand. So we're talking about roughly the same dollar amounts here. So it's how do we meet the needs of what's being requested, maximum impact, and have enough money to meet the other needs as well?
So I did something very similar to this earlier today. I did have some different assumptions than you did about what I thought we would all support, but it was very close. Just looking at it, though, I don't know if we're going to talk about like options that we are leaning towards right now, but option A was sort of what I was going towards as well, just so, you know, the sewer department request is being fulfilled at least to some extent. So I don't know if we're going to take any votes tonight on, on some of the ones that maybe we all agree we are in support of, but I don't know. I think we should at least entertain some of that.
Yeah, I think.
Because I do know some of these requests are time sensitive. Like, I know the food pantry, like, this equipment is something that they really need very soon, you know, maybe we should just take that into consideration.
I started yesterday going back through my notes and running numbers and have an option in my mind. Some of them, I think, there's a couple of line items that are probably across the board. We all agree. There are definitely some that we will not have full agreement. So maybe I, I would support, you know, the ones that we, we agree on, why hold it up? Food pantry, I think, is a good example. PAC is probably another one.
Yeah. That's kind of what I would like for us to do, is to figure out if there are things that we agree on and to make those commitments and to figure out criteria to get the rest. Again, it would have been, I want to second Mr. Alonso's question, comments. I think there's about a million dollars here we've already allocated that I was not fully in support of, specifically DPW vehicles and an ambulance. And I did not, it's not that I didn't see the value of them, I just didn't think it needed to come from ARPA, but we've crossed that bridge already. And so how, I'm hearing from Renee, that you want to find commonality here tonight and agree on commonality, is that the approach that the majority wants to take tonight? Is what we have for commonality?
Yeah. I mean, even if it, even if we can get to allocating for one or two items, that does reduce the, and not the big, I mean, I think we need to stay away from the big ticket ones because they're going to take a lot more thought and a breakdown, as Mr. Alonso suggests. But just for example, I would throw in, you know, I think the BIF is something that we could discuss, you know, because it's a fifty thousand dollar request, and I have some things to say about it, and maybe, maybe that one can be dispensed with, you know?
It's one of the ones I did not include in my assumptions.
It's not on my list either.
For that reason.
Oh. Mr. Alonso, would you like for us to take the approach of working on criteria?
You know, I'm, as my comments prior indicated, the answer would be yes, but if there's things that, I mean, again, the small items that are clear that I think, but one of my major criteria is it has to affect the most people. So like, if I look at PAC, right, there's so many people who get their information about these meetings and the Water District meetings and the Sewer Commission meeting, everybody, thing that goes on in town gets recorded from them. It's a low number. They have, they have an equipment list. It actually went down. So that, but I think that's an exception than all the other ones, because I think when we talk about numbers, and I, I agree with Mr. Franco's point about the larger numbers, I mean, this, I want to know how we're viewing them. Like, affecting the most people is important. So I take a different view to enterprise fund or enterprise fund type requests than other requests. That would be one example. You know, I am, so, I mean, the Regional BIF, I'm not in favor of, I've never been in favor of because of that very reason. So.
And I'll throw this in again, an item that's not on this list that, that is under ARPA, whatever this document is from the Department of Treasury and what ARPA should be spent on. And I know it falls under the Board of Health, but private wells, being able to assist in some way for PFAS testing for private well owners.
Did you find, did you find justification in the ARPA?
It's listed on page seven.
Out of curiosity, which one of the, because there's four qualifying expense categories, which one would that fall under?
Let me get to page seven. It is, oh, hold on. It's under overview of the program.
Are you looking in our Google Drive?
I'm looking, this is actually the document you sent to Caesar and me.
Yeah.
It's the, yeah.
So if, if you have it, page seven, invest in water, sewer, and Broadway and infrastructure.
Yes, but that's specifically for public infrastructure. I don't think.
Aid for private wells.
Okay. Well.
Because I looked it up, it's four or five hundred dollars to test. So, I mean, it's, I don't think it's a, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar ticket item, but I mean, something. It's a group, I mean, and I think, I don't, that's actually maybe since we have some water people, I don't know how many, or maybe private, Board of Health, how many private wells we have in town, but I think it's, I know it's under sixty percent because it didn't meet the other criteria for the free program when it was available, but I think it's over forty.
So I guess my question is, because I don't disagree with you, I do think that, you know, it's worth considering, but in terms of prioritizing all the requests with the limited funds, my question would become, you know, where, where are we taking that money away from, right?
BIF?
If we're, okay, so.
I think, I think there is, I think it's something that we should not lose sight of. Having not decided on, on everything, you can, you know, Flat Hill Drainage is on here right now, too, so that's still to be decided, right?
With no cost assigned.
Yeah. But ten thousand dollars sounded pretty. I was surprised it was that low, to be honest, but.
Yeah. I, I certainly would be willing to commit ten, fifteen thousand dollars to support that getting cleaned and see if as a first step we can get there. So hopefully we can coordinate a meeting with them soon. All right. Maybe a good way to do this is let's go, let's go through this, each one at a time, and let's see if we are unanimous in being for or against. So let's, let's start there. PAC.
Yes.
Fifty thousand. Are we unanimous in agreement?
We, I'm not going to speak for everyone. I am.
I see two, three, four.
I did forget what the actual, there was a breakdown on that one.
There was.
And so did that number change, too?
It dropped.
Okay, cool.
All right. So we're unanimous on, on PAC?
Yep.
All right. Sewer's going to require more conversation. Boys and Girls Club has submitted a hundred thousand dollar request. They're asking for fifty thousand dollars that they can apply in fiscal year twenty-four and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty-five. Are we unanimous in the request from Boys and Girls Club?
Not without more discussion.
No. Are we unanimous in the, I already know the answer's no for Water. Are we unanimous in the request for these schools?
Quick question for you.
Yep.
Are you asking if we are unanimous on doing it at all or on the amount requested?
On the amount requested.
That's my assumption.
All right. Are we unanimous on the one-on-one, six forty for the sidewalks?
Yes.
I thought we were going to get more details on the layout.
They provided that, they gave us the, the map of where it's all going to be at.
Do I have that?
Is this, did they get an actual quote? Is this an actual quote or estimate from somebody, or is it somebody just guessing what this is going to be?
That was an estimate, I believe, from the DPW Director. And that's going along Northfield, because I know there's like a gully, like a drainage.
It's going around Marshall Pond and leading down Chestnut.
Oh, no, I thought this was connecting.
This would, this would be going.
Turkey Hill and Oak Ave.
From, from, from the school on Northfield down to Oak Ave, and I'm sorry, not down to, down to Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
And then it would be picking it up on, right at.
At the intersection.
At the intersection with Oak Ave going towards Marshall Park.
It's going to go around. It's, isn't it slated to go around the pond and to Marshall Park on Chestnut?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not the part on, I was worried, the part I was trying to picture was on Northfield connecting Oak Ave to Turkey Hill, because there's a, there's a ditch alongside the, like, like, like a drainage thing there. I'm trying to imagine.
Location of Oak Ave.
Oak Ave?
Yeah, I'm blanking.
It's right near Highland. Well, it goes right by the school.
Yeah, it's right next, middle school. Parallel to Turkey Hill.
Got it.
Elementary school.
I'm like, I'm like sitting here blinking for a second. Yes. So it's going from there down Northfield Road. So it's really just coming from Northwood Road to Turkey Hill Road.
I just have, can't picture how that's going to go in.
See, I have to look at the map. I didn't think any, that it's going to go along Northfield?
Along Northfield.
To where?
To Turkey Hill Road.
From where? Turkey Hill Road is right off Oak Ave, I mean, so.
Yeah. But it also connects to Northfield.
It also connect, yeah.
By the Woodlands.
Right. Okay, so it's going to go all the way to that, all the way to there to make a circle?
Well, it's not going to make, it's not going to go down Turkey Hill Road. It's just going down Northfield.
Relatively short, comparable.
No, no, oh, yeah, okay. I did, so the entrance, yeah, so Turkey Hill over there is right by the entrance to the Woodlands, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
And including what I said, that piece that goes to Marshall Park.
And then the piece to Marshall Park. So two sections, Northwood Road, small sliver, and then sliver going down Chestnut.
That was, that, that's certainly from the, the site visit several years ago that got us to the point where we got the additional sidewalks that we currently have, that was noted as a next step that was, that would be the, the next piece that would be added. So it makes sense on part of that plan.
I.
And getting from the school to Marshall Park certainly makes sense.
Yeah.
I have a question about easements, because looking, looking down Chestnut, this is going to definitively impact some people's lawns, putting the sidewalk. So I did this walk a few weeks ago, and it's going, it's going to change the landscape of a couple of people's lawns, and there may even be a retaining wall impacted. So I'm curious about easements, so I would suggest that we get clarity on easements. And then also, even if you look down Northwood Road, you have those three new homes that just went in right at that corner, and this presumably would have to cross the ends of their driveways as well. So I think, I'd like to get a little clarity on easements along, along the path recommended.
And that gully on Northfield.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you had expressed concern initially when this came up, that it's going to cost more than this.
I did.
Yeah.
I think, I think a hundred and one is, is low, especially if you have residents that are looking for compensation or that want modifications. You know, I don't know, I don't think that we've done any legwork yet talking to homeowners impacted.
It'd be nice to have everything lined up, a green light, ready to go.
That's going to drive up costs. All right, we don't have agreement there. Regional BIF.
If you're going to take a guess at it, one hundred and one dollar, one hundred and one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars seems a peculiar number to throw out as an estimate.
Yeah, no, it was an estimate. It was.
I know, but still, if you're saying that you think it's going to go over, and we haven't even gotten started, and somebody didn't say, not a hundred and ten, not a hundred and five, a hundred and one, six hundred and forty.
Cut it down to the nearest ten dollar bill.
Thirty-nine cents.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Do we have a universal agreement or disagreement related to the BIF? I heard one no, so if we can come to kind of.
No, no, I did not say no. Yeah, yeah, no, I think we already have disagreement. He's a no.
You're a no. Are you, you're a no. Caesar, you're a no?
I wasn't a no, but I'm not entirely sure I'm going to support it. It's definitely on the bottom of the list for me. But I wouldn't, no, not a no.
Okay.
I will just say that I have been brought around on the idea, and when the time is appropriate, I'll speak to it, so.
Food pantry.
I'm trying to figure out what, it's not, I'm not a no, I just don't support it means, from my, my colleague to my right, but I guess we'll find out what that means. I'm not a no, I just don't support it.
Well, that's not exactly what I said.
That's what I heard, too.
I, I said it's at the very bottom of my list, so it could be removed from what I'm willing to support based on what else.
All right. Food pantry, twenty thousand dollars. All right, any objections?
Twenty. But it's fifty.
I, I was advised this evening that they dropped their request.
Oh.
It's, I don't know why they did, because I'm sure they would have got the fifty if they had accepted.
You said that already, yeah. Sorry.
So I think I said it to them when they were here.
There's a lot of data flying around.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, it certainly hits the people who are the most vulnerable in town.
All right. Caesar, you have to exclude yourself from that one, but is there any, I recommend that you exclude yourself from that one.
That's fair.
Given you're involved with Alliance Club. So twenty thousand, we're in agreement, twenty thousand. All right. Municipal Building Design, is this something that we need to talk in more detail about? And this is, right now, we, you know, then our last meeting, the highlights were that we had a proposal, we're all in agreement. Next steps on this is working with a professional to be able to draw up some plans, so that way we can come to town meeting for approval to proceed.
I'd like, I mean, when is, when is your presentation of your final report that, because these are engineering costs at this point, right?
These are assumed engineering costs.
So I'd like to hear what, what, see what the plan is. Personally, I like to hear what the plan is first. Was it given?
Yeah, we, we met back in May.
Where you told, you came up with the final plan? Am I really now having?
Senior moments, yes.
You may, I don't want to say that you are, could be due to anything, but yes, we did meet with the Municipal Building Design Committee in May, and the Municipal Building Design Committee gave an update, Mr.
Weren't there still options?
At that, at that point, it had been finalized down to the high.
I apologize.
Yeah, to one concept that was proposed. And at the, and the board feedback at that time was, was universally in agreement. Same feedback came from the Planning Committee, and we had noted that the school committee was not fully in support of the plan, that they were largely in support of it, but they remain concerned about the impact on the after-school program.
So I guess my, my only question then is, why, why would we not, if it's going to take two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, why would we fund it at a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Two hundred and twenty-five was an estimate from.
Well, everything here is an estimate, I get that.
Yeah.
But why would we go less than the estimate? Why would we start off with something that we don't think is going to be, even the estimate didn't cover the cost?
What?
Like, either we're going to make engineering costs in diagrams or we're not. Not we're going to get three quarters of the way there and then not have any money to finish.
So again, it was putting forward ways to try to get us to stay within the limit and meet other people's needs. It would be this board saying, sure, but do it for fifty thousand dollars less.
Okay, but we would go out to, this would have to be.
It would be.
Put out to bid anyway.
It would be. And it would be subject to the costs that come in. Correct. It may not be wise, Mr. Alonso, to drop this number down. All right. It seems like we needed to discuss this one more and get some finality on that number. I don't, we don't have agreement on the library, and we're not going to have agreement on the sewer. So that would suggest that the food pantry for twenty thousand and PAC for fifty thousand seven hundred and fifty will be committed by the board. Is there a motion to commit those funds? Uh, is there a motion to commit those funds?
I would move that we commit those funds as you have just read.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Alright, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose, no, any abstentions?
So are you doing all this together?
We should've broken that up one by one. Let's, let's cancel that vote with board permission, let's redo it.
I would move that we commit the money for the PAC equipment upgrades at fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye. 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 Those oppose, no.
I move that we approve the food pantry request for twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye. 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 Those oppose, no, any abstentions?
I abstain.
Both motions pass. Alright, so for next steps, let's, let's talk about this criteria for a little bit. So let's pull up the, um, what's noted in our drive is draft ARPA rating criteria eleven, one, twenty-two. Alright. And I just wanna check with our newest members, have you guys had the time yet to, to review all of these criteria in detail?
Now, the, the, so, it's, it's in.
It's in the ARPA.
Here it is.
And it's the reading, draft reading.
This one?
Yep. I will note that, I, I'm the one who compiled this, but this was, as it says right at the, under the heading, it's based largely on the capital planning committee criteria, which again, was meant to be a starting point back in November when we started doing this. Now, there's, as we've discussed this, I think there are other things that come into play that should be added, some of this should be removed. I mean, some of this, again, it's, it's lifted from another committee and how we do things, but they're not, some of them don't apply, and they shouldn't, shouldn't apply. Whereas other things should, like, how does it benefit the most people, uh, would be one. Does it apply to everybody, or is it, is it sectioned off? Does it apply, even though the ARPA funds are open to just about anything we want to do, you know, we should try to follow as closely as possible the ARPA guidelines as provided by, uh, the document provided by the federal government. That would be, I'm just riffing on some things that would be important. And, you know, what do we wanna keep in reserve for things that might need to be addressed, that we don't even know about just yet?
Yep. Alright, so, following that discussion, it seemed as if the board back in November was not, in, majority of the board was not in agreement with those criteria, and so what we did then was, we took another stab at a second set. And so what you have in there is the CLFRF ARPA, and this was a second outline. And this one goes into, um, you know, provides, you know, it starts off with just references, resources, and what I did in this one was I, I made the suggestion here that we come up with a percentage-based allocation, or numerical-based allocation on the front end. The numbers that are plugged in here were just to demonstrate how this could work, similar to how tonight, when I presented these options, was to demonstrate what it could work. It was not a suggestion fully on how to go proceed. We've made certain decisions about things that are in here that we weren't gonna do, um, premium pay for eligible employees, that we weren't gonna do that. And the board, um, the feedback from the board at the time was that they, we weren't in favor of taking this kind of broad approach. Uh, we were split three to five on, on some of this.
Three to five?
Three to two.
Three to two.
Okay. I was gonna say, we had eight people back then.
You know, we were split three to two on certain parts of this, we were split, uh, three to one on other parts, uh, three, one, one on other parts of this. And so I was, we were holding together kind of a loose majority of, of what all the different members would agree to, and then we had a change of membership that blew up those, um, three, two majorities. And so we were then kinda two, two on a lot of this. And so we held moving forward on these criteria because we were a bit deadlocked on how to proceed. In this, we also, you know, so this is something that will provide us some guidance, again, it's, it's another look at it, and it's taking more of a program, programmatic, percentage-based look at where do we want funds to go based on available funds. So, whenever I always say to the board, or we say to the board, hey, let's do some homework, um, it always means that, uh, it's gonna take a lot longer. So, I'm a bit at a loss on, uh, next steps here, so I'm open to all suggestions.
First question, I will go back to my initial comment, can we get, given what we've passed today, move those up to the top, can we get a list of what is still outstanding, broken down by department requests?
Yes.
That would be really helpful.
Alright. List of outstanding requests, broken by department.
And broken by item as well, like, for example, the library has like six items.
Right, exactly, exactly, so sub-request, so they have, right, the library had five, or whatever it is, requests, and, you know, the water district had a couple of requests. The sewer district, the sewer department or sewer commission had a few requests broken down.
So for the sewer, we had, we had previously nixed the, um, pump station request for three hundred thousand dollars. Do you, we had prioritized that down to two hundred, do you want me to bring that back into it, Mr. Alonso?
Personally, no, cause I wasn't for that anyway.
Okay, alright, so we'll look at our prioritize requests, and I will work on the expansion, um, of those areas that we, we can expand it. You know, when I was writing this, I almost did that, and I didn't, um, and in hindsight, I should've just did it. Instead of consolidating, alright, so we'll work on that, we'll have it ready for next meeting.
As part, if I could, uh, Mr. Chair, as part of informing that, for example, with this particular reference to the library request, I know that the HVAC was removed, was there not some other aspect of those requests that could possibly be subject to green communities as well? Like the, uh, the solar shades?
The what, the solar shades, maybe?
The solar shades.
Yeah, yeah, and the backup generator.
Yeah, the backup generator for a hundred grand.
Yeah, so I mean, that could potentially still be whittled down, and, or at least for the purposes of exploring other avenues for.
Right, as we discuss it, I mean, that, see, that's, that's, that's what, that's the kind of criteria that we're looking at, I mean, can it, has it been reviewed by other people? So, other departments like green energy.
Yeah, that, so that's definitely a criteria, alternative sources of.
I will point out to Mr., to, to the Chair's documents that he put in together, he has three rounds of funding. And, you know, although I didn't agree with the percentages, this is about where we are, and that's good. I mean, so we're actually following that in rounds, we've actually given away, you know, we commit, not given away, to, we've committed, you know, a good sizable amount of this, two-thirds of this already, and so there's no rush, this, the money's not going away. There was a scare earlier in the year, that with the death ceiling in the, in the federal government that was gonna get removed. It's not gonna get removed, so we have time to just think about things and plan them, and just because something gets, maybe potentially, if something doesn't get voted in initially, it could come back at a different funding because of different reasons and different priorities. So I don't think we have to have a rush to get rid of the money, this has a third round of funding at the end of next year. I don't think we should necessarily wait till the end of next year, but maybe this time next year, we still have money to spend unless something comes up.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing that, that I'm aware of that has somewhat of a time limit on it is, um, Boys and Girls Club, and that was related to, um, their fiscal year and staffing, and their staffing costs. Uh, and so I know that they are looking for us to make a commitment one way or the other. Again, part, half of their request was for next year, so the request in farmers really is only fifty thousand dollars right now. But that is something that they've, they've followed up with us on, and then the water district as well, uh, has made it pretty clear that they would like, um, to know kinda sooner than later on this one, because they need to make a decision on how to proceed, and our decision's gonna impact kinda their next steps. But I, everything else seems to be, um, flexible. And then municipal building design, that's up to this board to determine that timeline, um, you know, but we are a bit on a pause until we have more support. Okay, I think there's a clear guidance and direction going into next week. Select board committee and liaison assignments. You may, you have a question, yes. You have to come to the microphone. So that way the folks at home can hear you.
Let them see me, it's about a block a night. Matt Woodward, sixty-four Arbor Street, uh, just to your, Mr. Alonso's comments on the, the spending timeline. While you're correct, there is time to, 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 um, appropriate this money, but as I read in the ARPA, there is, it does have to be spent by a certain time. So the, if you delay possibly, you know, uh, allotting certain monies to certain organizations or whatever, they need, they'd be at that crunch to make sure they get it spent in time for the end, so just, is, is.
And what is that time, Madam Town Manager, was it twenty-six?
Twenty-six, the expenditure.
I mean, I'm not saying, you know, right away, but like, it's, you know, for, for the water departments, obviously, you know, if we did pilot studies, et cetera, et cetera, we need to line these things up, just like everything else in the world with delays and everything. We'd, we'd wanna be able to have the amount of time to appropriately use the money in that timeframe, so.
The commitment is by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Alright. Next on our agenda this evening, we have select board liaison and committee assignments. So, if we can go to our Google Drive here, thank you to the water district for coming. Representation, rather. Are you here for first write of refusal?
I am, yes.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and bump that up? Alright, so we have, um, actually, we're gonna wait for Mr. Franco to come back. No, no, we're gonna wait for Mr. Franco to come back, and then we'll hit it, okay?
That was so official. Should I approach the podium?
So long as you don't scream outside of public comment, period, we'll be good. Alright. Cause then it's free rein, public comments, you can say whatever you want. Uh, select board liaison committee assignment, so let's just go ahead and pull this up while we wait for Mr. Franco to come back and to start talking through this, and when he comes back, we'll present the, um, we'll just jump straight back into first write of refusal. Alright. Okay. So, where we left off on this one was, um, I'm just double checking our assignments. So looking at, if we go into our Google Drive, we look at the assignments as dated for two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four. Is there any disagreement on where anyone's name is on this list as of right now? So no from Renee.
Nope.
No from Mr. Alonso. And, um, okay, so then what we have opened, the finance committee, finance committee, finance committee liaison, finance committee appointing committee, we have.
Which I'd be happy, I am on now, which I'd be happy to remain on those two.
Okay, I, I, I wanted to, um, participate in the finance committee appointing committee, um, but.
Feel free.
I'm not interested, um, I don't have the capacity to pick up the finance committee liaison. Based on your experience, uh, Mr. Alonso, and I'll lean to you, do you think that the two go hand in hand, or that they can be split?
No, they, no, they don't necessarily go hand in hand, no.
Okay. That would, that was my only request, was to pick up finance committee appointing committee.
Be more than happy to step aside.
Do you want to remain finance committee liaison?
Sure.
Alright. Okay, and then we have, um, MART advisory, MPO, MJTC, MRPC. We usually look to our newer members for these ones.
So, I'm, I'm interested in MRPC, and I can pick up more, um, but I'm also hesitant about time commitment. So I know two of them meet once a month, one of them meets every Tuesday, I believe, um, and I also have a question. So for the MART advisory board, I'm pretty sure it said that the chair should be their representative, and that someone else can be, but they're considered a delegate if they're appointed. Is there a difference in that, that role, if someone is, okay?
No, I'm conflicted with MART. Um, MART is both in the process of purchasing property from me, and they're also a former tenant of mine.
Okay, well, that's an issue.
I can't participate with MART.
I'd be willing to pick up that one.
Alright, it's a good one, MART is not a, it's not a long, lengthy time commitment, they meet generally once a month, some lately more frequently. Um, and I am on some of their meetings, but in more of my professional capacity, um, but it's just discuss the building they're buying. But their meetings are usually about thirty minutes. So that, alright, so we have Caesar.
Are they in Pittsburgh, that, those meetings?
They're on Zoom. They're all.
They're in Zoom.
They're on Zoom, alright, so MART, um, Caesar for MART, are you making these notes?
Perfect.
And then we have, um, MPO.
MMPO?
That was me.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Um, we have MMPO, this board, it's more advisable for us to be on MMPO than MRPC if we're gonna pick one, cause MMPO is senior to MRPC, um, but, MPO meets during the day.
I can do that.
But they meet at one P M.
Yeah, I know, I can make that work.
Okay. Caesar for MPO. I recommend you tapping out of your, uh, work with the regional stuff on that. MJTC or MRPC? Do we have anyone from the, um, planning board on either one of those?
I'm not, I, I think they did appoint a liaison, but I did look.
The planning board usually appoints liaisons to MJTC and MRPC as well. So do we have any takers for the regional transportation commission or the regional planning? Alright.
Those are in person, no Zoom option?
Those meetings are on Zoom, uh, however, they, they prefer to meet in person, uh, and I believe they, they will be going back to meeting in person. And those meetings happen in Lemonster, usually around seven o'clock.
The board did receive this list from the planning board, the reorganization. MRPC is Amanda Reed, as well as the MJ.
MJTC.
Jim, JTC.
So planning board did appoint representatives to MJTC and MRPC. Okay, open space ad hoc committee.
I'd be interested in this one.
I think we.
How often does it meet, Lou, you were on it last time.
In a manner of speaking, yes.
Okay.
I think that somebody else should take that at this point, I.
No, no, I'm just trying to get a gauge by how often they met, that's what I'm trying, how often did you miss it, Lou?
A lot. That was one I really dropped the ball on, because, but, so that would be great if Caesar would take it.
We didn't pick anyone. Alright, so open space, we have Caesar picking that up too. Renee, is there anything else, well, you have some heavy hitters, so you have the school committee, which is heavy.
And American with Disabilities Act, right?
Yeah, ADA. Do you wanna? I'm just looking, Caesar, how many times have I ever named?
MJTC and MRPC, right, that we need?
Say again?
MJTC and MRPC is the only things that are needed still?
Yes.
And American with Disabilities.
No, that's Renee.
No, she's, yeah, she's on that, yeah.
How come it's not on my?
I don't know, it's on this one. Alright, okay, so we have a couple of openings, we'll pick this conversation up.
MRPC says select board is considered an alternate?
It's a planning board.
So it's just.
Backup kind of thing.
Yeah, so that doesn't sound like a big commitment. Is that a fair statement?
The ones with the, the names already listed, they're locked, right, they're locked in, yep.
Yep, yep. Alright, we will come back and revisit this, um, for a future day. So it looks like we have the majority filled, openings remain in, um, MJTC, MRPC. This planning board was Caesar. Caesar, you've picked up a bit, I think it's a little heavy on you, but.
Is it really, you'd think so?
Because I'll, cause I'll, I'll do the open space.
Tom's gonna do open space?
I'll do it, if, I mean, if he has too much, I can't do some of the ones in the afternoon that he can do.
Tom, I would recommend for you to.
I was on planning board, is my name not on there anymore?
Yeah, no, you're on planning board, yeah.
I don't see it, in the one, oh, I'm.
You want the.
Someone updated the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three one with some of the additions, but.
Yep, okay, alright, let's go now to our notice of.
So was that, was that changed, did I, am I on now on open space or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Tom, we got you on it, um, just to recap, we have ADA for Renee, um, Tom on capital planning. Council of Aging is Mr. Franco, Economic Development is Mr. Franco, Finance is Mr. Alonso. Finance Appointing Committee is now me, um, Library Trustees is me, MART is Caesar, MPO, MMPO is Caesar, Open Space is Tom, Planning is Caesar, School Committee is Renee, um, Municipal Building Design is me, Senior Tax Relief Group, which is Lou and Tom, if there's more work to be done there, and Middle School, High School, Siggus Classes is Lou and I. Alright, next on our agenda, we have our notice of first write of refusal for parcel number four on Lemonster Road. So in our Google Drive, um, let me make sure it's in here. It's the, um, notice of, it's identified in the photo NOI parcel four, and we have the notices in here as relates to this parcel. So what's being asked of us this evening, um, is for us to waive the right of first refusal for this parcel. So we have in our drive a note from the Conservation Commission that notes that, uh, they reviewed this and identify that they do not have interest in this parcel. they do not have interest in this parcel. We also have a note from the Open Space Committee, um, that speaks to this, and that there was also, uh, it says Members Present Agree That This Was Not a Recommendation to Committee As No Corms Present, However, um, Their Position There Was, Was Not To, Was To Have The Property Appraised Prior To Making A Decision On Its Right Of First Refusal. And That Was As It Was Related To Parcel Number Four. And Then On The Zero Reservoir Road, uh, They Had A Couple Of Comments Here, But Anyway. All right, and then we have, let me make sure I'm hitting everything else that we have in our notes. Planning Board, we have a note on the Planning Board from Mr. Bernian here, also notes that, is recommending for the Select Board to not exercise its right of first refusal here. So that's Conservation, Open Space, uh, Informally, and then the Conservation Commission.
Not that it will alter my opinion about this vote, but in the future, I was looking at all the documents, like, there's no document that shows a map of where this property is and what the size of it is, so in the future, if we can include that, usually we get a whole deed of it.
Yeah, um, not sure why it's not in the drive, but I, I'm gonna pass this down to the Board, because I do have it here, and let me just get to it.
Found it on the G I S.
So in our first packet, I'm gonna pass this down to the Board, like to take a look at it. And in the meantime, I'm gonna, um, ask the resident to come forward. Are you the owner of the property, the lone looking to buy it?
I'm the owner of the property.
All right, if you wouldn't mind just coming and explaining what's going on with this property, and why this is being presented to us in the first place, that would be helpful information.
Yes, hello, my name is Stefan McSweeney, I'm the owner, or co-owner of the Limited Liability Company that owns the parcel of land in question. We purchased this, uh, fourth quarter of last year. The intent is to develop it, uh, with single-family homes, that's why we're requesting that the land be released from the Chapter sixty-one program. We're working, actually the same engineering firm that was here earlier, to prepare all the necessary documents for water retention, drainage, et cetera. But as part of the process, we are requesting that it be released. Uh, right now, the intent is to develop the entirety of the parcel, which is approximately thirty-five acres, running from Lemonster Road to Sunny Hill Road, uh, with four homes.
So from Lemonster Road to Sunny Hill Road?
Yes, so now that's not the entire, so the parcel is in the Tax Conservation, or whatever the name of the program is. That's, I believe, just on Lemonster Road, but the parcel that we purchased runs from Lemonster to Sunny Hill.
So thirty-five acres, you just said?
Is what we purchased, I'm not, so forgive me, I'm, I'm actually, I didn't realize I would even be called up. I recently moved here, my partner kind of runs the day-to-day operations, I'm just here, and since we were notified that this was happening, and I'm very interested to see the process of how this works, I agreed to attend, so I'm not fully up to speed on all the details. I'm happy to answer anything, but with the caveat that I may not, if there's anything specific, I'm happy to give you a specific answer, but it would have to be at a later date.
The, the only question I have is, you said thirty-five acres roughly, and you're only planning on doing four homes?
So most of it will remain, it's either, currently, most of it is wetlands, most of it will continue to remain wetlands, obviously. In order to organize the lots that we intend to develop, little pieces have to come out, and it was the advice of Council, we take the entire parcel out, not try and request little chunks to come out, so we're requesting everything. The land that we basically encircle that is in the sixty-one B program, we're requesting all that come out, we will parcel that out to those lots.
All right.
If that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense.
Do, do you own the other parts, the parcels one, two, and three?
I'm not sure which map you're referencing, I do not believe.
Parcel we're looking at tonight that's coming out is twelve acres, twelve plus or minus acres. So that's all four parcels?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Because I saw in the Open Space, they had mentioned five homes were planned.
There was the, so at one point in time, we were considering a fifth home. Unfortunately, the access to it is not cost-permissible, so currently, we're intending to do four. It, it is on the, sort of a side of a hill, and it just would be entirely too expensive to put a driveway into that last home, which is why we took that off the planning list.
Hmm, I don't think that's correct. No, this is all the way back here.
No, there's Sunny Hill.
Oh, there it is, okay. Okay, that one, okay, gotcha.
Question for you, if I could, uh, so the twelve-point-five acres, that's where these four homes are gonna go on that twelve-point-five acres?
No, so the homes will be very close to the, the two roads, Lemonster and Sunny Hill. It's just, in order to meet the zoning requirements, the appropriate acreage and frontage, et cetera. Some of what was in the tax program now, small pieces have to be pulled out to add on to those lots, essentially. And so that's why we're requesting everything come out, that will give you latitude to adjust property lines if necessary, that kind of thing. But the intent, most of the land that you're, that is under consideration is wetlands, so it will remain.
Yes.
Unoccupied as well.
Saw that on the map. Yeah, okay. And, uh, so what is it, each, each has to have fifty-foot frontage, is that the?
Yeah, that's sort of. Yeah, I believe it's a hundred as well as a minimum square footage requirement.
Yep.
And then some of that is a little bit beyond my understanding.
And it's through width and a whole bunch of stuff, yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Where will the house, I mean, not that it matters in my decision to this, but just out of curiosity, where are the houses be on Lemonster Road or, or part of Sunny Hill Road?
One on Lemonster, three on Sunny Hill.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Are there any, um, are there any, are we able to make a decision on this tonight, or does the Board need more time to look at maps and other things?
Um, I'm fine with the, to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, especially given, you know, having been informed by people that have really drilled, the other boards and that have really drilled down on this, I mean.
And they're unanimous, so there's not even a split decision among those boards.
Yeah, so deferential, deference to, uh, you know, the, the people that are more down in the weeds.
All right.
But who, the, the Planning Board didn't wait.
They did.
Yes, they did.
They did weigh in, it's right here.
I thought it said in there that they were waiting for the Open Space Committee.
No.
No, they discussed it, so the Planning Board makes their recommendation based on limited access.
Recommending that Select Board not exercise a threat of first refusal.
Yep.
Second to last paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. I think this is pretty straightforward, so, um, it's pretty clear what you guys are trying to do, and I don't think I have any other questions for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you will, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we waive our right of first refusal for the lot before us, Lot Four of Sunny Hill Road.
Parcel Four of Lemonster Road.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading off the Planning Board, sorry.
Okay.
Lot Four of Lemonster Road.
Second.
Uh, not to parse to, but it's parcel four, and lot, yeah, parcel four, sorry.
Parcel Four of Lemonster Road.
With that correction noted.
Second.
All right, do we have any other discussion on this? All right, as many as are, and so this is again the Board, and by voting in the affirmative, we are voting to waive a right of first refusal, which means we are not exercising your right to purchase the parcels as you're coming out of chapter. And, uh, assuming the property owner already knows, you're gonna be getting caught up in some taxes and everything else. All right, is there, we have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? As many as are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. So we will, we will sign off on all the required documentation, and then the Office will be in touch with you. All right. Go ahead and sign off on this now, I will pass this down for the Board to sign, it's two pages, I'm sorry, it's more than two pages. Because I took off the cover page. To the Town Manager's Report. Thank you.
Everything that has to be signed is on the outside, right?
Yes, everything that needs to be signed is on the outside. And Elaine, um, is notarizing.
Great. Let's start with meetings and events and other announcements, the town beach hours are Saturdays and Sundays from twelve P M to six P M. And Monday through Friday, ten A M to seven P M. Seasonal beach passes and swim lessons can be purchased through the Lunenburg M A dot MyRuck dot com site. Farmers Market is every Sunday from ten A M until one P M, until mid-October on the Ritter Lawn. The Summer Band Concert Series was supposed to begin last night, but was canceled due to weather. The first concert will now be on July seventeenth, and will be every Monday thereafter at seven P M, ending on August fourteenth. And it will be on the T C Passios Front Lawn. For Board and Committee Commission vacancies, we have the following vacancies. One vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, two vacancies for Finance Committee. One associate vacancy for Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy on the Open Space Committee, one vacancy on Personnel Committee, and one associate vacancy for Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in these positions can find the volunteer applications on the town website, complete them, and return them to the Select Board's office. And if you have any questions on these, the roles and responsibilities of these positions, you can contact our office at nine-seven-eight-five-eight-two-four-one-three-zero, extension one-four-four. For employment opportunities with the town, um, I wanna just regress to a previous agenda topic. We received since our last meeting, um, two different, actually, four resignations. One from the Conservation Administrator in a Petri, she's leaving, um, her last day is this week. She's going back into the plant identification kind of field. She found this role was, uh, did not fit what she was looking for long-term. The Assistant Meal Site Manager, Sandy Ritchie, resigned as well, um, that was due to, um, hours and, um, it did not fit her schedule as far as what the hours were. And the two seasonal cemetery workers resigned, uh, they both found full-time positions elsewhere. So all of those positions are gonna be in, in the announcements of vacancies. So we have the current vacancies, uh, for employment. Assistant Town Accountant, which is thirty-two hours a week, Assistant Meal Site Manager, which is nineteen and a half hours a week. Assistant Outreach Coordinator, that's a new position this fiscal year, that's ten hours a week. Conservation Administrator, which is thirty-six hours a week. Facilities Superintendent, which is forty hours a week. The Finance Director, which is forty hours a week in a contractual position. I have the Equipment Operator, which is forty hours a week, Principal Assessor, which is forty hours a week. Seasonal Cemetery Laborers and Videographer Positions, which is two to ten hours on average a week. All of these can be found on the town website under Employment Opportunities.
If you can pause here for a couple of minutes.
I have a statement that I'd like to read at the end of my report that relates to staff.
I will wait for that.
Okay. Invitation for bids, request for proposals. The request for proposals for assessing recertification services, which is the five-year reevaluation, were due on June fourteenth. We received one proposal from Vision Government Solutions for a hundred and twelve thousand. A notice of award and contract has been sent to Vision. Invitation for bids for the operation and maintenance of the Lunenburg Wastewater Collection System were originally due on June fourteenth. But the overall cost of the contract exceeded the budget, as the preliminary quantities at that time were estimated were too high. The current vendor was issued a two-month extension on the current contract, and the I F B was revised and will be going out to re, will be rebid with bids due July twenty-sixth. Invitation for bids for roadway maintenance for fog sealing were due on June twenty-first, and we received one bid from Seal Coating, Inc., doing business as Indus Industries, for a hundred and three thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars, which was within our estimate made an amount for those services. The invitation for bids for two snowplow trucks will be released on July seventeenth and will be due on July thirty-first. An update on nine-twenty-five Mass Ave. In the past few weeks, I've worked with the E P A and our consultant from Beta on administrative filings with D E P. A bill of lading was required to be signed off that will allow the transportation of the remediation waste being stored at nine-twenty-five Mass Ave. That was part of the remediation work to be removed from that property and, um, to be received by the receiving facility, that's part of the process. Now that that is submitted, the contractor will be able to remove the waste pile in the next few weeks. Our consultant from Beta, who is our licensed site professional handling the reporting, required as part of the identified soil contamination, submitted a release notification and retraction form that also needs to be signed off. Both these forms, um, this is a new process that I wasn't familiar with, but required me to set up a electronic submission through D E P, so the, the site and the access for them to submit those, and then I have to log in and sign off on this. The Lunenburg Ledger will be doing a story in this project in the near future. I was also contacted by the E P A to be part of their published success stories for this site, so, good news there. So on to what, and bear with me, this is a lengthy, um, more commentary, public statement on staffing. The past few years have been challenging on many levels, but staffing continues to be one of the hardest obstacles to overcome. Looking back over the last two years, we averaged between seven to twelve openings at any one point. We have had vacancies at the department head level after multi-decade-long employees retire, like the D P W Director, and most recently, our Finance Director. We have retirements of support staff that are critical to all the components of what it takes for a municipality to run smoothly. No matter the position, since we do not have a large staff to begin with, and some departments only have one or two people in it, anytime there is a vacancy or transition to a new employee, it causes a strain on the organization and a loss of experience and knowledge that goes with it, in a period of time for a new employee, any new employee, to learn and grow in the position. We are now alone in this struggle. I hear it from my colleagues in the public sphere, and I hear it from those working and managing employees in the private sector. I bring this up for a multitude of reasons. One, we currently have a recently retired Finance Director who will assist us in closing out our fiscal year, since she is that type of person that doesn't want to leave the town in that predicament. This is a crucial position in town. We have advertised for this position for three months now on Indeed, the website, M M A, Mass Hire, the Mass Gov Finance Officers Association, and the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accounting Association, with no candidate to put forth at this time. We have reached out to consultants that assist municipalities in this situation, but they have all have little or no capacity to take this on. The Assistant Town Accountant position has also been vacant since January. We have gone through interviews, had interested applicants, and ultimately, don't take that position. Another critical financial role is the Principal Assessor and the staff in the Assessor's Office. This office has key deadlines to meet all year long to ensure that we are performing inspections, doing data collection, valuing all real and personal property on a fair value basis, inspecting property sales, implementing a cyclical property inspection program, completing annual property value adjustment analyses, conducting building permit properties that capture new growth in town, assessing motor vehicle taxes, and many other duties that are critical to the financial stability of the town. We are currently advertising for a Principal Assessor, but last I looked on M M A, so are seven other communities right now. I have spoken with private companies specializing in this work, and they do not have the capacity for special projects or to take on an outsourced role of this nature. I have a verbal commitment from Nate Kramer of M F S that he could help out one day a week as long as it were remotely. We are advertising on Indeed, in-house, the website, M M A, Mass Hire, and the Mass Association of Assessing Officers. We've reached out to recruitment companies, and one wanted a twenty percent commission on the first year's salary, and the other had this to say, quote, although we could provide what we call our assistance service, I don't think there is much we can do for you if you've already advertised. As you know, hiring right now is extremely difficult unless you're paying above-market money. End of quote. I had a two-hour meeting with D U R two weeks ago, and they stressed how important it was to have a Principal Assessor, and how they shouldn't be the person, the Principal Assessor shouldn't be the person answering. how they shouldn't be the person, the Principal Assessor shouldn't be the person answering questions at the window, and how they should be out in the field and getting familiar with the properties in town. I told them the history of turnover in the office, and we are not alone in looking for an assessor, that there is a shortage across the state and region, and companies don't have the capacity to take on more work. They relayed that there is a fellowship program for accounting right now, but not one for assessing. The Call-In Center may be working on putting together a program, but currently nothing exists. This does not help the town or other towns right now who need to fill this important position. The Principal Assessor and Finance Director positions are very specialized and specific to the public sector unless you want to spend time training. You need to be offering money, enough money, to attract or poach a person with similar title from another community. I understand the position we are in as a town. It is something that keeps me up at night. We are trying to fill these positions as they are instrumental to the operations of the town. However, I can't manufacture people. Right now, I am trying to manage expectations. We may be without these positions and operating on less than what we are used to and the skill and experience level that we're used to. We're doing everything we can to fill these positions as quickly as possible, but responsibly as well. I'm working on putting together additional checks and balances in place so we don't have a repeat of this past year, but part of that will depend on people that don't report to me and are accountable to the voters. Everyone needs to hear that we are in a difficult job market right now, and that we will continue to struggle to fill these positions, but I will continue to try to get assistance from outside agencies and advocate to the state that this is a universal problem with municipalities and that we need assistance.
Do we have any comments related or questions related to the Town Manager, Town Manager's report, or that statement?
I will comment that, first of all, I want to thank the Town Manager for that statement. For all those of us, well, those of us, three of us who've been on the board, maybe not the two new members, because they've just joined, we are aware of this, but I don't think enough people are aware of this. I think the thing that stuck with me the most in that prepared statement is that we are going through, and the Town Manager and her department are going through every available place to try to drum up people interested, but we can't manufacture people who want to work. And the people we are interviewing leave, and this is not, as was indicated by the Town Manager, this is not unique to municipalities. I mean, I hear this in the people I work with, my customers in my company that I work with, people seemingly come and go. It's like it's a revolving door. And that makes things really problematic for companies certainly, but for municipalities who have deadlines and who have state requirements. Now, part of this onus, I hope we can maybe as a board make a statement and bring our state delegation in, because the DOR has got to help us out here. If we are advertising and we don't have people, I don't know what they want us to do. I mean, what is their plan? It's not like we are against hiring somebody, but again, we can't get somebody to put in an application. And we're going to need to come to some, you know, solution for that, because we can't be hindered by deadlines that, again, we are in no power to do anything that we're doing. The shortage in the assessing world, but it's the shortage in the finance world. What is now, this is the third Conservation Administrator that we'll be looking for. I mean, this is, you know, we're in a very tough spot. And I know there are people, as, you know, as indicated earlier in the meeting at Public Common, who are looking at the Town Manager like somehow magically, you know, she goes back in the office there and makes a few calls, and all of a sudden, we can fill all our vacancies. That's not the way it happens. So I'm glad you made the statement, because I think people need to know that. It's going to be rough going. And it's not going to be rough going just in the assessors because of what happened there. It's all of these employments, when you have 40-year employees, I mean, the last four, the last four retirements I've gone to, I think, you know, communally, that's almost like 180 years of experience, or, you know, 150 to 180 years of experience we're losing. And nobody's going into municipal employment, seemingly. So, so thank you for making the statement, and, you know, just going to have to buckle up. I don't know what we're going to need to do, but we're going to need to do something. And we're going to need a lot of help from the state during this.
May I add to this? Yes, I want to thank you for making the statement as well, and I just want to, I hadn't, of course, had no idea you were going to make the statement. Nobody did. But it just reinforces what I said earlier by complete coincidence in that people may not like who was put in for the interim assessor, but that position is absolutely critical. Everything comes to a grinding halt, and that is very time and schedule sensitive. Somebody needs to be driving that bus. It may not be someone right now who people prefer, but there's a, there's a lot of inside knowledge, too, just having come from that assessing department. I mean, Rena, for what, Swayze, for, Swayze, for better, I mean, people may not like it, but they don't fully understand. She is absolutely expert in the field, and she is a good interim solution. And I think we're highly, just just reinforces, but we're very fortunate that she didn't walk out the door, and that the appointment was made when it was made. We would really be in a bind if that didn't happen. So.
Thank you. You know, I, Town Manager and I have a lot of conversations, and I think should be the first one to tell you that. I probably step over the bounds of the limitations of the role of biggest life sometimes in my commentary about certain things dealing with staffing. But, you know, I appreciate the Town Manager's comment, and I, I did, well, I want to make one of my own along those same lines, and along the lines of what Mr. Alonso has said this evening. We are in a very challenging time right now. Not having a Finance Director, Town Accountant, or Assistant, we have bills to pay. We have real bills that have to get paid. And we have a large budget that has to get administered, and we don't have anyone there in the office anymore to account for the bills. I mean, that's what the bottom line is. And without that critical person, I mean, we are fortunate that Karen is on a vacation and is coming back from it, and will work with us in a consulting capacity for a lot longer. But this is a really challenging time. You know, I spoke with the Assistant Accountant who left our community, and this was in her last couple of weeks, and I was very direct and said, why? And I know that that's stepping on some toes, but I still asked, and said, why? And she made it very clear to me that we don't pay enough, that she has a family to take care of, that she, that she loves the job, she loves the community, but she has to take care of her family, and she can't do it off of 40-something thousand dollars a year. And that makes perfect sense to me. Working for Mass Development, I hear a lot about our town through Mass Development, and I want to get to another comment here. I think that some of this, a lot of this is definitely situational. Conversations I've had with Mike Kush, with Representative Kushmerek, with Senator Cronin, I know that, you know, Tom and Lou have heard me say this, we need to have these pathways to get people into these jobs. You know, if you grow up in a city, urban environment, you don't know what a Town Manager is, you don't know what a lot of these roles are. So how do you get awareness of what these roles are? How do you create these pathways to get in there? That was a conversation I was heavy on with Senator Cronin. I was thankful that he came up with innovation pathways, which is looking broadly at how you get some of the students who don't go into the college world, how you get them into middle-class jobs. They're having success there. But more needs to be done to draw people into these, into these roles. Conversation I've had with the Town Manager on every evaluation since I've been in this role has been encouraging the Town Manager to come with an internship program to create pathways into these jobs. And what the Town Manager has said, and I completely understand, is in this state of affairs with these vacancies, you know, interns are hard to manage. Like, you need to have the time to be able to manage them. And first priority goes to the staffing positions that are vacant. So in this environment, how do you manage, you know, that, those other pathways? We need to have them nonetheless. I mean, I don't think it's more work that we can add on to this, add on to the Town Manager. I can see, talking with the office, the Town Manager is consistently working for a minimum of 65 hours a week, every single week. And at my urging, the Town Manager has stopped sending us emails on evenings and on weekends, but I know she's home still working. We know that the Assistant Town Manager has been working above and beyond the hours that she has. We know that the finance, that whole office down there, just to get through this year, have been working on Saturdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. So we have many staff that have been pulling in six-hour days. We're in an unsustainable environment. And when we think about the workplace, the world that we're in, it does not help, and I'm speaking now to residents at home, it does not help to come here and bad-mouth staff. That does not make the environment better. It doesn't make them want to be more committed. Nobody works better when people are talking crap about them. Nobody does. And so when we have pushback that's rude, that's uncalled-for, that's, you know, just the times we live in, where people pay their taxes and somehow it, many people, too many people feel entitled to treat people like crap because they don't like information that they're hearing, rather than being civil and saying, let me take a breath here. Clearly, people are trying to work on solutions. Let me figure out how to be part of the solution here. But I also think that the general cultural environment that's not unique to Lunenburg, it's just fed by media and people are eating it up. It's that people are very rude to government these days, and they're very rude to the people who work in government these days. And so it becomes even less appealing for people to want to come here. And then, and then because some of these communities are so small, the Finance Director community is small, the Principal Assessor community is small, the Conservation Commission, uh, community is small. And so when people come here and have these bad experiences, it makes it even worse. Because I've heard about some of this stuff at work, at my professional job, about, about things that residents and others have said to staff, that it really does spread like wildfire. It's a multi-pronged problem. I think how we as residents can help is we need to be civil in our approaches with our staff. We need to elevate ourselves here quite a bit more than what we, than what we've been able to do. Not everyone, but when we have those things, we've got to elevate ourselves. That seems clear on our part. We also need to be realistic about how much money we're paying. That, you know, we look at, looking, talking with HR, looking at our staffing structure, excluding the police and fire departments, our staffing has not grown substantially over this 30% population boom we've experienced in these last 20 years. Yes, we've added in a couple of positions here and there. Yes, police and fire have grown, but the rest of our staffing is pretty similar to what it was 25 years ago. Yes, again, we've added some position, but we have not grown at the rate of our residents. Our residents require more attention than they have before. Our residents are needier than they were 25 years ago. We also have more of them. And so in order to provide the quality of services that we all want to provide, we've got to have qualified people. We've got to pay them. And I, and I hate to be someone, as someone that most people know is generally conservative, especially financially conservative, to advocate for government to grow, but we are in an era right now where if you aren't paying people livable wages, they're going to go. And we got to bump up our sta, our salaries here. When we look at what we're paying our police chief, the job is not appealing because it's less money than lieutenant makes. You know, we look at some of our DPW Director roles, some of the lowest-paid people around. When we look at some of our staffing, our town clerk makes 40-something thousand dollars a year. Everyone else pays their town clerk 70-something thousand dollars a year. You know, we look at the amount of hours we have available. How can you, in this job market, where homes are going for 470, 500 on average? How do you take a job that's paying you 50, 40,000 dollars a year? So we need to be realistic. And again, I'm talking to the folks at home, as well as to my colleagues here. We got to be realistic going forward, that this hyper-inflationary period we've just gone through, you know, this great resignation, we got to bump up our salaries in order to be appealing and retain the talent that we want. Because how it looks right now is it looks like come January the 1st, we're not going to have real tax bills to pay to people. It looks right now like we're not going to get tax bills to people until next May, and that we're going to have to borrow some money to get through it. Millions of dollars. Tens, 10 million, eight, nine million. That's what it looks like right now. What it looks like right now is, we don't know how we're paying bills in two months from now. We just don't know. You know, that's what it looks like. It looks like right now in conservation, we've made this commitment to all this conservation land, all these conservation rules. We don't have a daytime agent anymore. You know, it's a hard situation to be in. How we get out of this is by first elevating ourselves, controlling what we can control. We can control how we behave, we can control how we act, that, you know, we need to exercise some real control over ourselves and how we interact with government, understanding the environment that we're all in. That's one thing we can do. We also can talk to our friends, neighbors, children, and encourage people to come into these pathways. This issue is systemic. Government is unappealing right now for a variety of reasons. And we got to get the talent, but we have to be an appealing place to work. And we got to give people more money, which means we all have to pay more money. But we have to pay people more money. So it's a, it's a complicated thing, but, you know, this is a warning sign that things are about to get tricky for a lot of us. Very, very tricky. So. Thank you to the Town Manager. I think you understood that I was going to make a comment about staffing tonight, and that I was going to, you know, make the appeal to people at home, that I plan on coming to the town and really using this board, working with the members of this board, and for this board to work to really advocate for some of these increases, and I will be on the forefront of advocating it. In order for the government to work the way we want it to work, we have to fund it. We have to fund it more. And that sucks, but we just have to do it. And Heather, I will say, I feel like a big part of my job is, is making sure you stay in your job, because I recognize the impact of how much this is impacting you and your family, and the sacrifice you guys are making. I know my family already feels like my sacrifice is too much, and so I can't imagine how much, how hard this is on your family. So, we can't do this without you, Heather, and I really personally appreciate you. And, you know, sometimes you got to take the hard things and just take them, but don't take it personal.
No, thank you.
You're doing the best that you can do.
So are you.
All right. On our old business, we did have one old business item, Master Plan Steering Committee representative. And we did not designate anyone for this. Do we have any member of the board that would be interested in taking on this responsibility?
I know you asked me last time, but I cannot do it. I cannot add that to my list of things.
Okay.
Sorry.
I probably can't add it, and I did drill down on it a little bit. I just, you know, just sort of informally asked Mr. Bernie sort of what that would look like. And so I'm still letting it swirl around.
Yeah. Does this need to be one of us, or can we delegate someone into this role? Because if we can delegate-
Typically, we can delegate.
Because we have some long-term residents who may, it may be helpful to have them on this.
You have to go back to their charge.
So, I'm just going to wait for you to pull that out before I say to people at home. Master Planning Steering Committee is really, really important. You know, this year, we've had a lot of residents come forward to speak about what they need the government to do for them. I think in many occasions, although it was not an easy road, we rose to the occasion and were able to provide residents with the relief that they desperately sought. And my hope is that in that process, that we have invited other people to perhaps get involved. So, one member of the board of selectmen appointed by the select board. It has to be one of us. I don't have capacity for taking this one on. It sounds like two of us don't. Can we, is this by charter?
This is by the planning board. They, they develop the-
With the board's consent, can we go back to the planning board and ask them to revise that to allow us to designate, designate, select to designate?
I would certainly.
With board consent?
Sure.
Yes, I would.
Certainly have, get them to entertain it, yeah.
All right. And we'll wait to hear back from them, but of course, if any resident at home would like to be this board's designee on the Master Planning Committee, please reach out to our office and let us know. Minutes, we went ahead already and signed the first letter of refusal. We do have one warrant tonight, warrant in the amount of $43,489. This is Accounts Payable Warrant. Let me just verify what it's for. Just generally Accounts Payable Warrant. I see it's a whole bunch of miscellaneous. And it looks like Lou already signed this one.
Yes.
There will be another warrant this week that I would ask board to come in. Probably be ready by Wednesday afternoon. It's for veteran benefits, so it's pretty, it's vital that we at least get three signatures on that.
All right. Okay. Any committee reports? I'm assuming none, given that.
Just have one before this meeting tonight, the Finance Committee Appointing Committee. I didn't realize it was going to be my last act as a member, but we reappointed Jay Simeone for another three-year term to the Finance Committee unanimously.
I thought you guys finished all the appointments like now.
Well, we did. Somehow, we didn't realize that he was up for reappointment because the people's termination, like, the end dates were, they were not correct. So we corrected that, and so now we are done. Until, so I think there's still a vacancy, so two vacancies. There you go. That's right, because Mr. Bailiff, right, resides, so.
He did.
Yeah.
What? Oh, I didn't realize that. Maybe I didn't, just slipped my mind. Renee, you can leave these down there when we sign them. You don't have to pass them back.
He grabbed it.
I did. I passed them back.
Any committee reports?
With all the sitting, I just wanted some aerobic activity.
It was a short pile.
Lou asked me how long tonight was going to be. I said, "Long." The water culvert's going to take a bit.
You kept your promise.
I do have two action file issues, if I may.
Yes.
Number one is, when I saw your town manager report about the wastewater, it made me think about the solid waste contract. Where are we in that? How many years are we in that contract?
We're in year two out of three.
Okay, so have we gone out to bid yet? Because this is always another gem of a RFP that comes back.
No. So Louie, the plan is to, I'll have to put this out to bid, but Consulting Services, as we've done with Mr. Toll this past year for outreach, and part of that scope would be to assist the town with developing an RFP and best practices, and so, and working with both the town and our vendor to see what's worked, what hasn't worked, and then we fine-tune that RFP.
I also would be remiss if I didn't mention that the complaints on social media about people not getting picked up, so I think Mr. Toll, being that intermediary, has done a really excellent job, and I see very, very few. The only thing recently was that the bag, there's the bag, batch of bad bags that were ripping. Other than that, everything has been working well, so thank God for that. My second thing is, on your report, when I saw the APDC vacancy, I thought about the Ritter APDC. Where are we in the resubmital of that project?
I believe that's close. I have a meeting with the facilities director tomorrow, and the, I think the drawings are all complete by the architect, and so planning on meeting with the APDC soon, I believe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, did you have a committee?
Oh, no, I don't have a committee.
Okay. I just wanted to say, committee, Economic Development Committee met on June 29th. This is very early in the processing, but, you know, more to come, but there's a plan in the works to have a meet and greet under the auspices of the Lunenburg Business Association, a meet and greet among, and including certain town officials and business, the business community, and would-be members of the business community, people looking to possibly set up businesses in town, et cetera. That's going to be for September. The tentative date, I believe, is the 28th, and more to come. So I'm just putting that on the, peek ahead on the radar.
All right.
All right.
Any other committee reports or action items? All right. I do have a public comment when we get there, but upcoming meeting schedule, July 18th, August the 1st, August the 8th. I will not be here on the 8th, August 15th and August 22nd. Are there any other meetings at any of these, any, will any members be absent from any of these meetings?
Yeah, so I'm going to be absent August 1st, 8th and 15th, and I'll be back for the 22nd.
So you have annual training?
Yes.
All right. And then, anyone else? All right, so it's looking like August 8th would be a three-member meeting. Okay. Unless the board wants us to plan to cancel that, but I think we should plan it and just plan a light meeting perhaps that evening, just to any business that comes up, so we can keep moving.
Some canapes and.
All right. Any public comments this evening from the town manager?
No, I've made all my comments.
All right. I have a brief one from the board, and I'll do go to public. You know, this evening, we had, you know, I called forward a member from Flat Hill Organization and inquired about their plans for remediating or managing the, maintaining their basin. And it highlights for me the second time in this role that I've asked a resident to step away from the podium. And, you know, what I want to say this evening is it's extremely uncomfortable for me as a true believer in democracy, you know, something I don't share very often, and I've said it in this meeting, I believe, once before, but I will share it tonight, is something I think about all the time as I do my own service for our town is why? What motivates me? You know, why do I do this? And there's a lot of things that answer that question, but what I always come back to is an experience I had during war in which someone who shared the same birthday, year and day as me, died in front of me. And it brought life into perspective at a very young age for me. Of course, being in war at twenty years old and twenty-one does generally anyway, but it really made me wonder and think, what am I doing? I could be dead tomorrow, and it doesn't really hit you till you see someone pass in front of you that is equally young, equally inexperienced, equally hasn't had a lot of those moments. I believe strongly in the value and purpose of democracy, but I also believe that we have to agree to the ground rules. And the ground rules are, you know, we have to be respectful and maintain a sense of decorum with one another. It is okay to be upset. It's okay to have heightened emotions, but in this role, I find it to be, I see what happens when a meeting goes off the hinges, when we don't maintain that decorum, when we allow those natural emotions that we naturally feel about things that matter to us to get in the way of the rules of the society that we've all agreed to live under. It's hard. It's hard. And so I offer the comment tonight, not as a rebuke of anyone in particular, but just to kind of reaffirm what my belief system is, is I think that we provide in all of our meetings an opportunity for people to say whatever they want to say, as critical as they want to be, and they have up to three minutes to say it. But in the meeting, we try to incorporate participation in many different areas, but that participation is limited, with the understanding that on the backend of this, that we leave these meetings at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, that our capacity to understand, comprehend, digest everything in front of us diminishes over time, and it's to maintain the decorum that I believe all residents expect of our government. That is strictly my intent. I personally am okay with people saying whatever they want to say, but I do believe it's a level of disrespect to people who've paved the way for this democracy to exist, for the people who've come before, to permit certain behaviors, in my opinion, that go beyond the ability to have a productive conversation and are strictly adversarial. That's probably the point at which I draw the line for me, but I do recognize that democracy is intended to be messy. We're not all supposed to agree. We're supposed to disagree. We're supposed to disagree often, but we have to agree to a way by which we do disagree. And that's my public comment.
I'd like to just build on that a little bit myself. Well, first of all, I'll say it's part of my public comment that there's a pancake breakfast tomorrow morning from eight until 10:00, and I should have made that announcement at the beginning.
Always get those three people who are still watching.
Exactly.
You've got to do this early.
No, I know, but I got thrown off because the councilman aging meeting is not until next week. It got postponed, and it threw me off because I know it's always the day after that, so, all right. So just in the same spirit, and it's not, and not bringing the previous conversation into it at all, I've spoken to this before, that the reason I do this and why I volunteer is because at every single level, I mean, you don't have to, like, volunteer at the national level or run for national office or state office to be a patriot, but being a patriot is about contribution. That's first and foremost. It's not about standing for the pledge. I mean, you know, that stuff is important, and hanging the flag and putting your hand over your heart. It's about rolling up your sleeves and digging in and making your community better. And that's, you know, so you just kind of set off, you know, a similar nerve here. And I've said this before, and it's why I act, and it's what I say at the civics discussions when we go to the school and speak to the students, you know, the preamble to the Constitution, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union." The formation of a more perfect union was not a single crystallizing moment in the summer of 1787. It was a charge to future generations, and every subsequent generation takes that mantle up and sustains democracy, because there is nothing self-sustaining about democracy, and it depends on people of good faith participating with intellectual honesty, not poisoning the well with misinformation, conspiracy theories, all sorts of nonsense. It's about drilling down, doing the homework, the hard work of getting to facts, and having sensible, intellectually honest discussions that are informed. That's patriotism. That's making your country a better place, whether it's happening in your school, your town, your state, or on the national level. Thank you.
Now, I feel obliged. I wasn't going to, but I have to. So certainly, I, you know, I would agree with most of what you said. In the backdrop of how things progress, I think everybody's goal, I believe most everybody's goal, is to make the place they live a better place. Earlier this evening, when we had the vote on the Finance Committee Appointment Committee, it was made by the chair of that committee, our town moderator, that, you know, it's okay that people on boards don't agree, and there's dissent, and in dissent, you come up with common solutions, because not everybody's going to agree. And the only way you can get to those, you know, those agreements and that cooperation is by hearing what people's concerns are. So while I agree with the backdrop of what you said, Mr. Chair, I would be, I would be failing in my duty if I said, from my perspective, the person, actually both people in your tenure that you referenced, that you cut off, neither one of them, in my mind, especially not tonight, was being disrespectful to the board, to the chair, or to the town manager. They were presenting a case of their perspective of a very difficult problem, talking about tonight, and as one member, I will say that I believe that the cutoff was unfair and it was unhelpful to the situation. So I understand what you were saying at the back, as the backdrop of, hey, we need dissent, and you have to have that, but, you know, in order to make dissent work in the favor of the bettering of a more perfect union, you have to hear the dissent. And there are ways to do dissent which are disrespectful. I don't think that was visible today. I think the person was not being combative. I think that they were saying, trying to state their case as he felt other people before him in the same dialogue were able to state their case. So I did want to say that, and I think it is helpful to the whole dialogue. If we hear from all perspectives, and once we hear them out, then bring people together to find out where that overlap is and where that cooperation is. And, yeah, there's always, there's always going to be, you know, give and take, and there's always going to be some kind of conflict, but, you know, that's what life is. And if people didn't think there would be any conflict in life, I have a, you know, sad truth for them to realize. So while I do agree with, you know, the background of what you said, I do disagree with the action taken, at least tonight.
Okay. Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public or from the board? All right. It is 10:25. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, we are now adjourned. To those at home, have a wonderful evening, and we will meet with you here next week on the 18th.